Graham Mahia, here.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Here. And we're going to take things a little bit out of order. We're going to move the pledge and the invocation to the start of the 6:00 read adjournment. But right now, we have special orders of the day. And I just wanted to recognize our interim city manager for a few more days. Greg Cordner has served us well. I think he's served us the council. And I speak for myself. I hope the others would say the same thing. But I think he's did a great job in keeping us on a steady course. And with that, I'll open it up to council members for any comments.
I'll go. I've already said this since we decided on Brett. Welcome Brett and your family. Good to see you. Glad to have you be our new city manager. But I'm going to miss Greg very much. He's been a very equitable and fair city manager. And I really enjoyed serving with you. And so, your presence will be missed. And to your wife for sharing you with us. We really appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I'd equally say the same thing. It's been a pleasure working with you. And your experience with all of your prior endeavors and cities has been a big help. So, we do appreciate that. And we look forward to having you negotiate the contract with the police coming up. So, that'll be good, too. So, we're not losing you completely.
Not giving away completely. Richard?
I think some of the highest compliments you can get is to be called a professional and a gentleman. And you've earned both. And you've set a great example of what an active, in-city city manager who's come to a lot of events, especially as an interim where you know you have a short history and your efforts have been just outstanding. Thank you.
Yeah. I want to also add, you've definitely been to a tremendous amount of community events, I think, on your own dime. I do kind of hold a little bit that you've got another Seal Beach person onboard and the city manager. So, there's something that you were a resident of Seal Beach and are new guys from Seal Beach. But other than that, Seal Beach is not taking over Los Alamitos. I just want to put that on the record. But Greg, it's been an honor to work with you. Thank you.
And, okay. So, before we go down to the floor to hand Greg a plaque and appreciation, there are members of the public that would like to speak. And I do have two cards here. So, whoever wants to come up first, by all means. It's Diana Hill and Sherri Crop. Who want to come forward and speak?
Good evening. I did put three items and I'll hold one of them until 6:00. And I think right now, those two big items, I just want to say, I love this great place you. As a representative for Los Alamitos Unified School District, our working with you has really been joyous. And I know that we had some tough, difficult decisions through the year, like with fees, et cetera. And you couldn't have been easier to work with. And I really appreciate that. I also appreciate your attendance at so many of our events. And we're a small community, relatively speaking. And I think the partnership that we have, the district and the city, is strong. And when we do that and are available, visible, it really helps that partnership grow. So, I appreciate that. And I'm assuming that Brett will be introduced later. So, I'll save those comments for that, too. But really, thank you very much. And I hope we see you around town. And even though your interim is over, we hope you still show up at some of our events. So, nice to know you. It's a privilege in my life. So, thank you.
Thank you. Diana Hill.
I am a school board member, but I'm also really active in the community. And I've done a couple of events in the community, and the Sugar Beet Festival, as well as Taste for La Salle. And Greg, from every point of view that I've worked with you, it's been very easy. And you've been very accessible and open. And I really appreciate that very much. And we appreciate the relationship that you continue to develop with us, with the school district, and with our working group as well. So, I just wanted to say, good luck. And I hope you, I'm sure we will see you around. I don't think this is the last of you. But thank you very much, and we really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. So, with that, any other comments from the public? Go ahead.
I would just like to thank Mayor and City Council for the opportunity that you gave me. It was a privilege and a real pleasure, working with a professional city council such as yourself. And I learned a lot from you, even though I had a certain amount of experience. I also want to extend my appreciation to the department heads. Great group to work with, for their dedication. And the city employees are fantastic in their daily service of our residents. Also, our residents in this community, very supportive. I've enjoyed working with them. You know, I have an open door policy. I've really enjoyed the folks that have come in. And the business community, fantastic business community. I also want to commend you again for the selection of Brett Plumley. I know that with his experience, he's going to do a great job. And looking forward to, he's one block away, so I'll see him as time goes on. And then also, it's great working with the school district. Chief Jones out here, OCFA. You know, all these folks over here. So, thanks for the opportunity.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I'd like to introduce my wife, who's gone on 36 years, Karen.
Okay. So, if I may have the council join us up front, let's hand Greg this plaque. Karen, would you join us up here, too, please?
This is the first city council meeting she's gone to since 1981.
Oh, wow.
Presented to Greg D. Cordner for your dedicated service to the city of Los Alamitos as interim city manager 2013.
Thank you very much.
Greg, it's been an honor. You know, some people in the community don't bring up the fact they've asked, "Well, why is Greg leaving?" You know, it's important just to give the context. Greg is retired. He had 980 hours he can give to the city. He also provided about 52 resumes that helped us find Brett. So, in the past, we've paid over $30,000 to recruit city managers. So, we got a two-in-one deal here. So, very good guy. And Greg, on behalf of the city council, we'd like to give you this letter of appreciation.
Well, you're overwhelming me with this. And we have a spot in our household, even though it's in Seal Beach. But Los Alamitos will be very near and dear to our hearts in our household. Thank you.
This is when you get to say, "I'm your favorite," too.
Okay. So, now, the next thing we're going to do on this one, if I may call up our new incoming city manager, and we'll do a handover of the office keys, sort of symbolically. But Brett, would you mind coming forward? I want to introduce you. And after a long search and looking at all the qualified candidates, which were a big field, and we narrowed it down with Greg's help, we were able to land this guy. And it was kind of touch and go. I'm glad he's here. And that's all I want to say. But do you want to say anything? Or?
Sure. Thank you for the city council for bringing me onboard. And I want to thank Greg for his great work for this city and for helping me through this transition and for being my neighbor, too. So, you know, we're at Seal Beach, but it's Seal Beach, Los Alamitos, Rossmore, this entire community, all working together with the school district, the entire business community. I'm excited to work for the city council. I'm excited to work with a great executive team and staff. And I want to thank my wife and two girls for being here at the council meeting tonight with me and supporting me. Very proud. I'm very excited that I'm going to be able to spend at least two hours a day more with my family. And it's just very valuable to me and has been pointed out to me through the process. But I know that in my heart very much, and I appreciate it. And I'm just really excited to start. And I'll be here on Wednesday and hit the ground running and work with everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we have some refreshments here. But I guess, before we go to that, staff, would you mind coming up here? And let's just take a picture with Greg, if you wouldn't mind? And maybe with Brett? And I think council, I think we can just let them have their moment.
You guys think he can go up on the second shelf?
Call this meeting to order. This, reconvene. We had a little bit of a celebration prior to this. But this is the regular city council meeting for the city of Los Alamitos. And we'll do roll call again, and the pledge and the invocation. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Still here.
Mayor Protem Graham Mahia.
Here.
Mayor Kusamoto.
And I'm still here. Thank you, Councilmember Murphy. And if you would rise for the pledge, that councilmember Edgar will be leading and then remain standing for the invocation by Mayor Protem Graham Mahia.
Good evening. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight, and we ask you for blessings over this council hall. And we just want to thank you for the residents of this community and those who have showed up tonight to support their community and do good things. We ask that you bless those, both in our country and in the world, that have been devastated by natural disasters. And we just ask that you get them relief and help soon. Thank you for our police department here, who watches over and keeps us safe, and our military, who, they keep our freedoms for us. And we thank you so much. In your name, amen.
Amen. So, first up, we're going to have item 6A. It will be presentations, a presentation of plaques in appreciation to our former commissioners. And if I can ask the council to join me up front, and we'll go ahead and award these, recognize these commissioners. And just to make it a bit easier, we'll do one by one. So, let's see. Althea Miller, please. Dean, would you do Althea's?
On behalf of the council and your work on the cable commission, we would like to recognize you and present you with this plaque, your service from 2011 to 2013. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we stay?
They want a picture.
Photo op.
Thanks. Yes. Thank you.
Do you want to say something?
Oh, wait. One more, Althea.
Family.
Doug, we don't have money on that, bro.
Budgetary issues, sorry.
Okay. Next, we have Larry. Andre?
Hi, Larry. How are you? He's got on the best-looking shirt and tie in the whole room tonight. So, Larry, in appreciation of your service on the planning commission from 2008 to 2013, and not only that, for so much more, he's a great community partner, and he's just been a pleasure to serve with. So, thank you so much for your time and for your...
Larry, good seeing you. Althea, you can go sit down. Okay. I'll do this one for Daniel Pats. Daniel, in appreciation of your serving on the personal appeals commission, which probably didn't have to meet that much, which is a good thing. But thank you for your service there, Daniel.
And he's now on the traffic.
Yes. From the box.
We're going to take a picture, too, Dan.
We'd like to recognize Beth Pyburn for being on the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs Committee for over seven years on this tour of duty. She's done a great job, and we just really appreciate it. And if I remember right, you've now left the city?
Yes.
And?
Moved to Seal Beach.
Seal Beach. Lucky them. Everything's going to Seal Beach tonight, folks. So, anyway, Beth, congratulations.
And last, but certainly not least, Norman Ray. I had the pleasure of serving with Norman. Eight years on the committee, three as the chairman. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The council can sit here. Next is the, is it small business? Okay. So, next, we have, in recognition of Small Business Saturday, which is coming up the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So, in our community, please, you know, in your community, wherever you're at, patronize those businesses because they work so hard for us. They, you know, they provide goods and services to us in our community. So, with that, we have some proclamations here. And I'll go ahead and read it, but it applies to all. And then, do we have?
Yes.
Yeah. We have three. I asked for three businesses to be here. So, is Naomi Rockemacher here? Jack and Cindy Zarmender? No? And then, is it Sean? Sean Wade? No?
No.
Sean Ward. Oh, please come forward, Sean. Please come forward. We're going to receive a proclamation. Good to see you again.
Hey, Sean.
And I know Sean because I met him. I was wandering around the plaza over here, and he had just opened up a shop. He was trying something out. And he sells personal protective equipment to businesses and even residential earthquake kits and the like. So, I'm glad you're here. And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Okay. Whereas, the city council of the city of Los Alamitos believes that small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the glue that holds our community together. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28 million small businesses in the United States that represent more than 99% of American companies, create 2/3 of the net new jobs, and generate half of private gross domestic product. And whereas, small businesses employ half of the employees in the private sector in the United States, add value to their community, and locally-owned independent businesses contribute positively through taxes and jobs. And whereas, the city of Los Alamitos supports the efforts of local small businesses and recognizes the critical role that they play in the community. Whereas, advocacy groups and public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Whereas, residents of our community and communities across the country are being asked to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Now, therefore, I, Warke Kusamoto, Mayor of the city of Los Alamitos, with concurrence to the city council, do hereby proclaim November 30th as Small Business Saturday in the city of Los Alamitos and urge residents in our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. Thank you very much. Counsel, anybody want to say anything?
Yeah. I also want to say something on behalf of our local Chamber of Commerce. I don't know if Sherri would like to say anything, but Sherri and her leadership team within the chamber have been very supportive of the local businesses. And we'd ask you on November 30th, on behalf of the chamber, step away from the computer, step away from Costco for one day, and support our local businesses if you can. They really need your help. Thank you.
And then, unfortunately, the two other businesses there here, I know one of them is Cartridge World and Jack and Cindy Zarmender. We buy cartridges from them for the city. The city staff does that. So, and they're over here at Senator Nick Savon's. And so, they're here right in our community, and they contribute so much. And please patronize them if you're able. And then, the other one is Naomi Rockemacher, who does the Kumon Learning Center over here. And she provides a very good training product for your kids. So, there's another small business. So, with that, thank you very much. Okay. the Coyote Creek Park.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm going to give you an update on the construction of the Coyote Creek Park. Just for everyone's information, the park is located actually behind Oak Middle School, the Mobile Home Park, and also the recent Olson Development property between us. And the park runs from the 605 freeway up to Choritos Avenue. It's approximately a half-mile long in length there. It's bordered on one side by the county of Los Alamitos Channel. And on the other side, it's the Coyote Creek Channel. And our park is wedged in between these two. It's a passive park, approximately four acres. And typically, in the summertime, it's dead weeds and gophers. And in the wintertime, it turns green, but it's not very attractive-looking. We got a grant from Rivers Mountains Conservatory to, of $1.4 million, to construct a passive park through this area. So, the Coyote Creek Park, just in general, is kind of a, right next to our bike trails where the people can ride basically from the ocean on up inside Orange County up in there. There'll be some directional signs out there. We started in July by doing rough grading, clearing and grubbing of all the dead weeds. And we took care of our gopher problem out there at the same time. The project, as most of my projects, there's a lot of projects underground. And they do some rough grading out there to put in the base roadway that's out there with irrigation. And the big component of the job is a roadway that's going down there of decomposed granite. Starts off with some gravel base, and the granite goes in there. And this is for a walking path, and it's also going to be used for the Edison trucks that go through there. It is part of the Edison right-of-way. And the Edison has to be able to get to those power poles with their heavy equipment. And so, this road is used for both their travel on their trucks and plus the people using the park. There are some turnaround areas, and also going to be future seating areas there. This is a picture looking toward the Oak Middle School playground. Inside the park, there's going to be divide areas where plants are going to go in there, the little concrete rings. We have the names of plants engraved in those. They'll be kind of marked what the plants will be, along with a few benches and trashcans out in the area. And if you don't like sitting on flat surfaces, we're providing rocks out there for kids to sit on. They're not quite as smooth, but the kids will like those better. That's out there, kind of a resting spot. Again, in the background there, you can see the bridge that goes over to the sidewalk and one of the main entrances to the park. It goes right by Oak Middle School. We had Edison, we had to install power, and also a water line. We had to extend a water line up Choritos Avenue with a booster pump station to irrigate the park. And we'll have signs that direct people to the park and what it is. We also have some informational signs that kind of, one of them will illustrate some of the history of the city of Los Alamitos that's out in there, kind of the history where we were from, kind of goes from 1881 on up to the '60s to kind of show what was going on through the city at the time. We'll also have some exhibits that show what kind of plants are going to, are growing in the area that's in there. Again, these are native California plants, the majority of them, from the site. Right now, we are watering. And you can see, we have, like I say, about 90% of the money is spent on getting this thing ready to plant. And you may ask what we're doing out there. Well, right now, we are growing weeds. And we're doing this for a reason. We are growing the weeds out there now so they can grow, and then we can eradicate them before we come in and put our real plants in. Since we are using California native plants, the planting season for those is the first part of December. So, you'll see us out there watering and growing ice cream. We will then eradicate the weeds, and then we'll plant. And half the area will be planted with seeds, and the other will actually have plants in them. And so, it's going to be kind of like, for the next month, you won't see a lot of activity going on out there. It's going to be, but we're growing weeds. The plants have all kinds of fancy names for plants that are going out there. But, so I had to look them up. And so, just an idea of some of the plants that will be growing out in the park, that's out in there when they're fully developed and blooming. There's a couple other sets of plants that are out there. Right now, the park is now is being used by people. They come out there. This lady and I had a nice conversation, who's walking her daughter down the park. She thanked me for having a nice path to walk from the neighborhood and go around and come back without sharing it with the bike riders up on top of the trail that's in there. We also have local businesses that have exercise groups that go out and jog on the trail, and local families riding up on top of the trail that will both enjoy our park itself. We have some other signs that are going to be put up that we have an artist working on. Those will be probably installed in the next couple of months, and we're working on that. The plants, like I say, will go in December. Come January, we will start a six-month maintenance period on the contract. We'll carry it through June. And then, it will be turned over to the city to maintain after that. So, with that, I open it up for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for city engineer?
Just one real quick.
Sure.
I had read in years past that there was something called the Emerald Necklace, which is parks along these pathways for bikers to, or joggers, to stop and rest. Is this going to be considered part of that now, Dave? Or is it different because we're too far this way?
Well, it's part of, you know, the bike path, the Coyote Creek Pike path is right there, you know, on the left side of that, that bridge goes up to the bike path. So, it is part of that system in there. And it's a park along the trail, and this is a perfect place where people then to pull off and get off. And actually, we're going to try and tie it into, you know, our bike path system into, like, on Oak Street and through in there.
Right.
And this is, like I say, Choritos Avenue and the entrance behind the school are the two main entrances to get to the bike path and for the bike path people to get into our city.
Right.
It's much safer to do it here than off of Catala and other places that are very dangerous.
Sure, sure. It's a wonderful opportunity. I know that Troy has been extremely involved in seeing this through to fruition. Ken Parker also was on the council at the time, where he was instrumental in getting us the award for the grant. So, I wanted to say thank you to you and then also to Ken Parker for giving us this beautiful asset for our community. And it's something that with this very little open space we have, we can use every little bit of it. So, thank you, Troy.
Any other questions? Okay. David, thank you very much.
Yeah. I just got a couple real quick comments. I think also a partnership, you know, when we have challenges lately with the school district for things, this is another example of where we partnered with them. And again, they're here, and thank you. This entrance to this park goes right through Oak Middle School, and they've been a partner through this whole process in making sure that, you know, the access is back there. Some of our concerns have been their ability to patrol that park because it's kind of off by its... off by itself. And when it's behind a school, you know, it poses a whole bunch of different other issues. I'd also say that, you know, I guess Dave, the other thing that a lot of people ask questions about is that the pavement from Seal Beach all the way up to the 405 freeway has been replaced on the bike trail from 405 up. You know, a lot of people keep asking, do you guys, are you going to replace any of the pavement? And I think the answer is no, not in this project. But I don't know if they filed that request through the city to kind of continue up. Do you know Dave?
It's not part of this project. We were planning on, once we finished this project, to apply to RMC to try and get maybe funding to improve the bike trail further up through the reach that, because we, the city put a couple of bridges further up and got this path extended from Seal Beach all the way up into past Hawaiian Gardens that, I think that was like six, seven years ago. And so, we want to continue that. So, we will be pursuing funding for the rest of that. The bike path itself is owned by LA County Flood Control. And I'm pursuing getting them to do it since it's their, their channel and all that. We maintain the wood bridges that we put across further up, but they maintain the actual channel itself. So, we're pushing on two ends.
Okay. And Sherri, the Emerald Necklace is Whittier Narrows up, further up towards the San Gabriel River. So, this is in the same channel, but different physical location.
Well, and I appreciate that because what I was reading, and I said it's been a couple of years since I've, I've looked into it, but that they were looking to expand it. So, I wasn't, I don't follow every other city. I didn't know how far they'd gotten. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. So with that, we'll go on to the next item. It is item 6D, a presentation by Dustin Reilich. Did I say correctly?
You did, thank you. Thank you for having me here today. Dustin Reilich, Director of Municipal Development, just to the right then, right? Okay, you got it, thanks. I'm the Director of Municipal Development for the California HERO Program. The California HERO Program is actually a public-private sector partnership whereupon we work under PACE, which is Property-Assessed Clean Energy Financing. It's a program that was designed under AB 811 and AB 474 for water conservation measures. And it was passed back in 2009 by Arnold Schwarzenegger. We created the program primarily to create and stimulate local jobs, the creation of long-term sustainable jobs. And at the same time, it creates lots of clean energy projects for homeowners, business owners to be able to do on their properties and create financing opportunities that they might not have had previously available to them while lowering their utility bills at the same time. I kind of put both of these slides into that one statement there, so I'll move on. The California HERO Program was designed actually and implemented out in Western Riverside at first. So, as a city, actually, Los Alamos could have their own Property-Assessed Clean Energy Program. Use your general funds, do all the administration and so forth. But most cities started calling Western Riverside when we actually launched the program out there and said, well, can you guys do it for us as well? And we went ahead and we opened up the JPA to be a statewide JPA and allow for other cities to opt in. To date, we've had 102 cities since February that have opted into the program to become part of it. We've had a very robust start in the first two years of the program in Western Riverside. And we look to launch the program in nine cities that have already approved it in Orange County, being Anaheim, Brea, Buena Park, La Palma, Newport Beach, Placentia, Santa Ana, Tustin, and Westminster. The program, the benefits for homeowners are pretty simple. It's going to help them to lower their utility bills. The financing that they would do would actually stay with the property. So, say you did a solar project and then eight years from now, you decide that you're going to move. If you have a 20-year financing on it, the solar financing actually stays with the home, which is a very good improvement and actually helps to allow homeowners the opportunity to do those large purchases for their homes that will create that efficiency. It's a no-money-down opportunity as well, just so that you have an idea. From a jurisdiction standpoint, like I said, you could create your own program. But by opting into our program and opting in as an associate member of our JPA, you actually can create local jobs, reduce energy bills and so forth. And there's no admin and no risk to you as a city, which is really nice. So, it's a self-replenishing model that we've created that securitizes every $100 million worth of funding and so forth. All of the different examples of the eligible homeowner improvements, there's over 160,000 of them. So, I can't bore you with all of those. But this gives you just a slow, a small assortment of the different types of projects that homeowners and business owners can do on their properties. To date, a year and a half, or almost two years in doing funding, we've approved 12,000-plus projects for over $425 million worth of funding for our residential program. Projects that have been completed have been over 6,100 for $106 million that have already been funded. And that makes us the largest residential Property-Assessed Clean Energy Program in the nation. Who qualifies? Just need to have clear title on your property, be up to date on your mortgage, be up to date on your tax bill, and also have at least 90% loan-to-value or better. The average homeowner that we've been doing business with is 65% loan-to-value. Many people don't qualify for traditional financing, but may have their home paid off and just don't qualify. And this allows them the instrument to be able to actually qualify for that. It's a voluntary program for the homeowners as well as business owners and very easy to implement. We actually have a very robust technology platform that allows for the contractors and the consumers to interface with that, along with over 200 employees that, that actually make the magic happen on a daily basis, answering questions and so forth. We have over 1,300 contractors that have opted into the program. And that's part of the economic stimulus that I was talking about. Local contractors are used for this program. So, as we actually get approved in new cities, we get local contractors for HVAC and solar and window efficiencies and so forth, so that when the website pulls up the ZIP code, it pulls up the local contractors first. So, we're stimulating local growth, which is key. All you have to do as a city in order to opt into the program is actually approve the resolution here at council. And what I would ask is that you maybe direct staff to work with me. I've created a really nice template staff report for them so that they can bring it back to you at your next meeting, I believe, December 16th. And hopefully, we can get that staff report to you and, and then we can have further discussion at that time. And that concludes my summary. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind, maybe there's some questions from the council?
Sure.
Questions?
Nothing.
I'll go ahead and start then. So, on the, I kind of simply put then, it's a funding vehicle for the property owner that has the criteria of 90% or better loan-to-value.
Correct.
Now, what are the typical interest rates that one might expect on these type of, let's say it's a solar or let's say it's a water heater?
Yeah, it starts at 5.95% and goes to the 8% range. And that depends on the term. So, five, 10, 15, 20, 25-year terms. So, the longer the term, the higher the interest rate. The shorter the term, then it's a smaller interest rate.
And in the case of solar, then there are federal and state rebates. The homeowner then realizes those savings?
Absolutely, yes.
And then, and then you mentioned there's about 200 employees employed by this joint powers?
It's, it's actually the California HERO Program and Renovate America, who's the residential funding company. We're out of Rancho Bernardo.
Okay, but, okay, those aren't, they're not city employee or?
No, those aren't city employees. But Western Riverside Cog is the actual bond conduit issuer. And they have, they have probably 10 or 15 dedicated employees that work on this project and making sure that they execute on documents and so forth.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Okay, the next item was pulled on the ambulance request for proposals. We conducted a special meeting prior to this. And the decision on that one is that we would continue to contract this out with the Orange County Fire Authority in terms of buy the service instead of trying to make it in-house and have city staff manage this. And the risk is just a lot lower for us to go to OCFA. And I want to thank Chief Jones over here for presenting at the earlier meeting and explaining the nuances of this program. So, with that, the next item up is Oral Communications, item 7. So, members of the public wishing to speak on any item in the jurisdiction of the council can speak. If it's relative to something on the agenda, I will ask you, just hold for that, for the agenda item, we can talk.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, seeing as we still have a room full of people after the presentations, could we consider moving, I assume they're all here for 10A? Could we consider moving 10A up so the whole room doesn't have to wait for, for their item, which?
The hearing you're talking about?
Yes, for the large number of children here will come very late.
Okay, that's, that's fine. But let's get through Oral Communications. And if it's a please the council, we can go to item 10A, the hearing after this. Okay, so, let's see. I have Johnny Strohmeyer, Oral Communications.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Johnny Strohmeyer. I am not here tonight speaking on behalf of the, actually, I am here speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, but not as a CEO. We have two events coming up and we'd like you all to participate. This Thursday evening at the Center Plaza, our members are hosting a wine stroll. And we'd love to invite you all to come. We also have new members that are having ribbon cuttings that evening. It begins at 5:00 and everybody's doors will be open that are wanting to participate. It should be a lot of fun. Again, it's just a wine stroll, just in the area, in the plaza, and we invite you all to come out. Secondly, I'm speaking on behalf of the Chair of our Young Professionals from the Chamber of Commerce, Josh Wilson. He's from Southland. He also is going to be a new dad. And so, tonight, he's with his wife and they're expecting their baby. So, he asked if I would come and I'm speaking on behalf of them. I'm certainly not one of them. Little too old. A little bit of an age limit here. But I, but I, yeah, it's all in the mind. But I brought invitations for each one of you to attend. This year, our Wonder Wonderland, it's our second annual, it's going to be in the plaza. It'll be presented on Saturday, December the 7th, from 4:00 to 8:00 in the plaza. Santa will be arriving around 4:30 and the tree lighting will be at 5:30. Our Young Professionals this year are partnering with Bandai, Foundation for the Community Food Drive. I don't know how many of you are familiar with what Bandai is. Bandai is the Power Rangers. Down Catala on the corner of Walker is the beautiful building, that beautiful glass building. Well, that's Bandai and they have a wonderful foundation. And they are sponsoring our event this year, of which we're extremely proud and pleased and honored that they're joining us. But their one prerequisite was that we do something for the hungry. And I can't begin to tell you how proud we are as the community is opening their arms to this whole thing. Today, we started sending out food bins. Both the city, this is the city and the Chamber of Commerce coming together with the host of being Bandai. All that would like to participate, if you would like a bin to be delivered, we're delivering them. We're also picking them up on a regular basis if you'd like. Some of the places that you can drop off your non-perishables is the Chamber of Commerce, City Hall here, Police Department, Los Alamos Medical Center, Los Alamos and all Seal Beach Schools, some of our local businesses, and we invite others if you hear this program this evening. If you would like to have a bin delivered to your place, just contact me at the Chamber of Commerce. Catala Senior Living, Alamos West, Leanna Fair, some State Farm, Southland, Youth Center, various banks, Edison, the Los Alamos Youth Baseball Team, they're also sponsoring this. Some of the Girl Scouts are going out and, and collecting perishables, of which I think is wonderful, or non-perishables, thank you. If your business would like to participate, please contact me at 598-6659 at the Chamber of Commerce, then we'll drop one off to you. If you have any other questions, just visit our Chamber website or the City Council or the City of Los Alamos website as well. We're once again going to be presenting snow. I have these guys over here, Cory, that would know much more about this than I. Last year, I believe, they blew 21 tons of snow. The kids had a wonderful time, the adults had a wonderful time viewing. And it involved the whole community. And we had about 1,200 people participating last year in the rain, I might add. So, I'd like to invite you all, we're going to have two areas this year. One will be the sledding. And then there'll be a play area where they'll have real snow snowing down on them so they can make snowmen and whatever. So, it should be really, really fun. Also, one added thing, I don't know how much you know, again, like I said about Bandai, but they're bringing Pac-Man with them. So, Pac-Man's going to come and visit us all that evening as well. We're still accepting vendor applications. And also, if you're interested in helping sponsor, please contact me at the Chamber. And finally, I'd just like to say thank you to this community. I don't think I've seen one community that has come together like this saying, we'd love to participate. We want to be a part of this. And so, I'm just looking forward to seeing that we have two groups in our community. All of it's going to stay within our city and we're hoping to fill a whole truck up. So, please join us and enjoy the enthusiasm and come and enjoy the whole day with us for the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to hand these out. I don't know how to do that.
Okay, the next card is Sherri Cropp, Dr. Sherri Cropp.
Good evening, Mayor Kusamoto and members of the City Council. I wanted to come this evening to talk a little bit about our track and field complex. And so, I want to give a couple of highlights. We do have one more workshop that's scheduled for the track and field complex, and that's on December 10th at 4:30. And we also are delivering our third flyer with information and an update to the community, which we hand deliver to each home. And so, that's about 400. And we'll be delivering that this week also. But a couple of highlights. We had a ribbon cutting ceremony last week. It's really an amazing complex. And I really appreciate some people that were able to come and certainly our community members. The track is really, it's gorgeous. For the first time in Los Alamos High School's history, we will be able to have our students not have to get in a car and travel to practice and to play game every week and every day. They'll be able to have home games, watch each other, and coaches will be able to see under, underclass, underclassmen Frochthoff and JV play as well. This Wednesday is our, we're doing another light adjustment and test. And so, we're adding some shields to some of the lights and doing another adjustment. As we've said all along, there would be more than one. So, this Wednesday, they will be doing the adjustments. And then Wednesday night, the lights will be on because they'll then test. So, they take light measurements and all of that after each adjustment. We are going to use the lights for the first time other than a test, the very next day on Thursday. We're having our, we've never really had one before. We're going to have a dusk rally, so it'll be approximately 5:30 to 7:00, in which students and families will be invited to come to the new track. And we're having a big pep rally outdoor for about an hour. And so, it's short, but it's really to celebrate so many of our athletic teams. So, we want people to know about that. Football's in round two CIF. They play this Friday at Fullerton. Girls volleyball's in round three and they play tomorrow night. If they win, they'll play on Saturday. And so, go Griffins. And of course, for people that don't love football, Friday nights also are Leif King and Queen events. So, I still haven't decided how I'm going to go to both events. So, it's going to be a trick. We're really excited about the ongoing partnership that we have with the City of Los Alamos and it's very important to us. And a couple of things that I just want to highlight, that we are of equal government agencies in that neither of us oversees the other. So, with that, it's really important that this partnership be strong and that we continue to work together. And so, I know from videotapes of previous board meetings that I've now had the privilege of watching, that some residents do come here with school district concerns. And I just really urge the residents to please come see us. They can call me direct or come to a board meeting at any time and with school, school district questions, concerns, and even praise maybe. Somebody will, will come and they'll be excited about something. And lastly, just two little highlights. Wall Street Journal, I know some of you may have heard me say this, but they rank Los Alamos the city in the top seven for it's one of the best places to live, for what you get for the whole school community and also for the education that you get for the price of your home. So, I love that, like to share that wherever I can. And then lastly, a big special thank you to the City Council. I'd love to come and talk more. And I know Warren Kusamoto, you've talked to me about this and I was really grateful about the SRO we have at the high school. It's literally, it's really been amazing beyond what I can really say in words. Just to have an immediate law enforcement expertise and presence is so really great for our kids and for our staff. And it seems like every day, we need his expertise or intervention. And Los Alamos High School is a very safe school, but little things come up every day. It's been so important, from traffic to students, to campus, to events. And we sit and go, how did we do it? You know, how did, and we, the fact is, we didn't have the same level of expertise. And the very first week of school, I ran into a student and I said to her, hey, you know, how's school going? She doesn't know me from Adam. And so, I introduced myself and she says, great, but it's so different this year. I said, it is? Like, what's different? And she said, well, there, we have a police officer on campus. So, I said, well, is that, is that a good thing? Is that okay? And she said, yeah, I really like it. Makes me feel safe. And you know what? He said, "Hi, he's really nice." So just the fact that students have that visibility and will talk to a police officer is really forward thinking. So with that, I'll stop it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Naomi, are you still here? Naomi Rockamacher? Naomi? Naomi, please come forward. You can't escape, you're here. You missed the proclamation, but come on forward, please, just come on. I'm going to call you at a turn. Just name your, just name your business, please. You weren't here for the proclamation, but I appreciate you being here.
Sorry, I was late.
That's okay, you're here.
Naomi Rockamacher, I'm the owner of the Kumon Math and Reading Center of Los Alamitos.
And I just wanted to recognize you as small business. We have a proclamation.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming and I appreciate what you do for the community.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have a card for Lisa Farrell for Freedom Event.
My name is Lisa Farrell and I'm actually a volunteer for Cottonwood Church and for the Orange County Human Trafficking Task Force. And when I first started volunteering for the task force, I realized that every time we go, we went to train somebody, we trained adults or people that just were at a big fundraiser, but we were not letting our children know what was going on with human trafficking. So the idea of the Freedom Event came up and we wanted to use the arts to bring awareness to our kids. And so the idea this year is resetting the mindset that human trafficking is not just in other countries, but it's actually happening within our borders to our own children. And we want to get the word out to our kids, whether they're in elementary, junior high, and high school, college age. I think the biggest targeted audience right now for the traffickers is junior high and high school, unfortunately. And so this event is meant to be a fun-filled family event, not dreadful in any way, so you can bring your kids and they can learn something and we can let them know so that they're not fooled, that they know what's going on and there's a chance for survival and prevention for them. So it's going to happen on January the 24th. We would love for you guys to come out, tell your schools that you want your kids to come and get extra credit for coming or something so that we can make sure that our kids are made aware. We really want the families there too, so they can hear what they can do as well to make sure that we're not just keeping the message to ourselves, that the family has, you know, the ideas of what they can do. Last year, we talked about staying connected, having dinner with your family, things like that, knowing what's happening with your children, knowing their friends and their lives. That actually prevents human trafficking, believe it or not. And so this year, again, we're going to kind of give some really easy, you know, what you can do to help prevent human trafficking in your own family, within your own neighborhood and your own borders. Okay?
Lisa, you told us the date, but you didn't tell us where.
I'm sorry. It's going to be right here at Cottonwood Church on Cattella. It's 4505 Cattella Avenue and it's going to be in Building B. Last year, we had about 1,000 people show up, so you'll probably see an influx of people going into one of the buildings there. It's a pretty big campus, but it's, you know, please bring everybody.
So then it's Cottonwood on the 24th of January at 6:30 and I believe the event starts at 7:30?
Yes, doors open at 6:30, but the event actually starts at 7:00, then we have a performance starting at 7:30. And so we've actually invite, last year, we had about 40 different anti-human trafficking organizations there. So you're there to learn a little bit about what they're doing so the community can get involved outside of just, you know, hearing the event. They can hear, you know, what A21 is doing or I Sanctuary or what all the different organizations are doing.
Great. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for the cards. Any other members of the public wishing to speak, please come forward.
Jay, my, good evening, Council. Not long ago, we sat here till late at the night, late at night, discussing, listening to the council discuss why we couldn't have a generator and a phone system. And how we have to make very tough calls. And we used to meet twice a year, or twice a month. Now, we meet once a month because the city doesn't have the money. And we've been making sacrifices as a city for some time due to financial interests. So I was investigating something recently and I wrote about it. It was in the pier last week. And I've got some concerns. There is a building in town that we don't own, that we've sunk tons of city money into for capital improvements. We sink around $3,000 a year into it for maintenance and it's managed by a group that is a private nonprofit and they spend their open 208 hours, according to their website hours, a year. To give you an idea, that's about as much time as you sleep in a month. We're giving them this gift of public funds and we're maintaining a building that we don't own, although it was conveyed to us. We can't sell it, we can't ever realize the money we've invested in capital. And I really would like the City Council to reconsider owning and maintaining the old fire station and potentially conveying that back to the county and seeing if we could get the 30,000 we put in for the, 30,000 plus we put in for the roof and the other monies we've invested in capital improvements back from the county and let them just sell the My children, my eldest child started attending preschool at age three and I must have signed literally 100 permission slips to go on trips while she was, before she graduated Los Al in June. She was involved in the rec department here at the city and not one trip was ever made to the museum. So obviously, this museum is a nice thing to have, but it's a nice thing to have when we have the finances to have it. And we no longer have the finances. I'd much rather see us invest in the new phone system that was requested, which would actually lower our monthly cost for phone service in the city and would save the city money over time, not cost the city $3,000 or $15 an hour for every hour they're supposedly open. The other thing that bothered me was while I was trying to find out information, I asked the city for information, like how many visitors do we get for the money? How many visitors have been there? How much use is it getting? And apparently, none of, the city has none of that information. We've had this building since 1975 and the private nonprofit has never bothered providing us with the data to know what our money is getting spent on. I think it's time to stop gifts of public funds to nonprofit, private organizations. And I think it's time that we turn the building back over to the county and find a way to regain our capital investment so we can use it for one meeting more a month, for other things that benefit this community. Because clearly, this building at 208 hours a month is not. Thank you very much for your time and for your consideration on this.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close oral communications and we're going to take things a little bit out of order. We're going to skip ahead to item 10A, which is the consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval for an indoor recreational establishment and retail business in the planned light industrial zone. May we have the staff report, please?
Mr. Mayor, before you start the staff report, this is an appeal on a Planning Commission decision that was reached in September of this year. My wife serves as a member of that commission. In speaking with the city attorney, he believes that there is no conflict of interest. However, we did have one other appeal earlier this year and I recuse myself, I think in abundance of caution, I would recuse myself this time from this decision. I would also make my fellow councilmembers aware that the person that is filing the appeal did call me and request a special meeting and I opted not to have that meeting with him because I felt, as I explained to him, this is the opportunity to hear all sides of the issue and then make a decision. And I've not made any decision on it, but I think because my wife was involved in the Planning Commission decision, I'm going to recuse myself.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, at the September 9th, 2013 meeting, the Planning Commission approved conditional use permit, CUP 13-4, for a batting cage business at 10714 Reagan Street. An appeal of the Planning Commission's decision has been filed by Scott Sturton, the owner of The Cage, a competing business. The recommendation is that the public hearing be open, testimony be taken, and the adoption of City Council Resolution Number 2013-27. Once again, the appealing is Scott Sturton and he, we list his location on Reagan Street. The report talks about the environmental categorical exemption and criteria of the municipal code, appeal standards, background that Mr. Philip Schwartz submitted an application on behalf of future owners, Excel Baseball. And then it talks also about appeal issues that have been raised as far as parking, uses in the area, traffic issues, and talking also about the conditional use permit. And I don't know if our community development director would like to expound on this.
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor and members of the council, thank you very much. Excel Baseball has applied for a conditional use permit for an 8,800 square foot indoor batting cage at 10714 Reagan Avenue for members of the audience benefit that is really close to Gunal Lumber area near the post office. They had to apply for a CUP because they're in an industrial zone. On September 9th, the Planning Commission approved that CUP against the wishes of one speaker, Mr. Scott Sturton. There was no other public testimony against the proposal at that time. Tonight, Mr. Sturton has filed an appeal of that, asking the City Council to overturn the Planning Commission's decision and deny Excel Batting Cage the same privilege granted to himself. Excel would like to locate within the Reagan Business Center near Kidnastics. I think we, most people are very familiar with the area. It's right off of Reagan. There's a long driveway with three industrial buildings. Kidnastics, Champion's Quest and Archery Outpost are there as well. Their, Excel Batting Cage's ability to open is pending, it's on hold, pending tonight's decision. Mr. Sturton's appeal application had brought up concerns with parking, ADA accessibility parking, traffic issues and noticing issues. I'll go through all of those issues. Here's an area I can help the public understand more closely where he is, back here, in the industrial zone of the city. Again, the appellate issues are listed on the slide. Claims about parking being inadequate, claims that it lacks accessibility spaces, those are the ADA spaces, incompatible uses between recreation and industrial, and traffic issues related to concerns of safety and traffic impact fees on going unpaid, and a claim of insufficient noticing. I'll talk about the various issues about the, the claim on the appeal is, there's a requirement that only one parking space per batting cage is not adequate. That's the claim. Our code is silent to actual parking for batting cages and therefore, the Planning Commission has given the flexibility based on their experience with like uses to establish a parking that they're comfortable with. And at this time, the Planning Commission was comfortable with the parking required for this application. They required 11 and he exceeds the 11 and has 18. The also concern was of grouping recreational uses together and an industrial use does not provide sufficient parking. Well, to counteract that issue, parking for the adjacent uses were calculated when they received their business license and conditional use permit and we haven't had problems with parking since. There was no ADA handicap space requirement. Well, until somebody files an application with the building department, the calculation for handicap spaces doesn't happen. The applicant right now is stalled in their ability to file for a building permit and therefore, the building department hasn't put the requirement on for how many of their spaces has to be ADA accessible. Should the applicant succeed with their application and move forward to the building department, the building official will evaluate their ADA accessibility on their building. The parking requirement, this is how we calculated the parking requirement. We had an office requirement for their 480 square feet of office that required two spaces. Their 456 square feet of retail portion required two spaces. And then the batting cage portion of it required 11 spaces, seven spaces, adding up to 11 spaces for the entire facility. Again, here is the, a better view of the parking situation and the users at the industrial property. When you enter on Reagan, Reagan's right here, you have Kidnastics in the first building. Kidnastics has been there for years. Excel Baseball, Archery Outpost and Trend Offset Printing has recently started using this building. Issue four was the incompatible uses between recreation and industrial. The area of the industrial zone has many compatible uses, like we've said. This particular industrial park has three other very similar uses. And if there were any area in the city where a recreational use would be compatible on an industrial property, this would be the area where it is most compatible. Issue five was some of the traffic safety concerns. The Reagan Business Center includes other issues, so there's a sensitivity to driving around these areas that have children. And this is one of those areas where the sensitivity is at its highest because of the like uses. The Planning Commission didn't have any issues with traffic safety concerns at the time. Issue six is the, the appellant had claimed that there was a need for a traffic impact fee. It's exempt from a traffic impact fee until it generates up to $200, 200 more trips in addition. This doesn't generate that kind of trip activity at the site and therefore, they would not generate a traffic impact fee. Traffic impact fee is usually for larger buildings or larger uses. As you know, the industrial area can handle a lot of traffic and because they're a high employer base. Issue seven, there was some claim that the deficient noticing for the CUP went out. Notices were mailed to owners and businesses, tenants within 500 feet. The tenants were marked occupant, they weren't marked names. We received very few undeliverable notices back and we feel that the noticing was sufficient for this project. Here's a radius map of the notice of who, which businesses and which property owners receive the noticing for this project, 500 feet is the legal requirement is. There's been a number of correspondence that we received regarding the application. This is from the appellant. He has a four-page letter that's in your packet describing his issues with the, with the application. You have correspondence from the property owner, Cherry Avenue Companies, in support of the original project, not in support of the appeal. And then you also have an application from the PRS Group in favor of the applicant, not of the appeal. I have to be very clear on that, it can be very complicated. With that, staff wants to kind of round up. The staff does feel that this is consistent with the general plan and there's, you know, there's always a concern with these types of uses proliferating in the industrial area. That concern remains a valid concern for staff, maybe not of the commission, maybe not of the council, but staff's always concerned with that. And therefore, we've made a fundamental shift in our future general plan to make sure that we have an area where these businesses can go in the future because we recognize the need for youth sports and youth activity in our community. And this exact area where this is located is the area highlighted in the future general plan map for these type of quasi-recreational, indoor recreational uses to go. So the, the future policy support will be there for this as well. Again, some of the like uses in the area are Kidnastics, Performance Tackle, I'm sorry, in the industrial area are Kidnastics, Performance Tackle, Deft Touch Soccer, Archery Outpost, The Cage in Los Alamitos, Melody's Dance Theater and the Dance The Cage in Los Alamos, Melody's Dance Theater and the Dance Factory. All of these are uses in the industrial zone, not necessarily adjacent to this, but in the industrial zone, that are very compatible with this use. Staff recommends that the city council approve the resolution that is before you. That resolution denies the appeal and upholds the Planning Commission decision and further approves the CUP 13-4 unless additional or contrary information is received tonight. And I'd like to, in closing, that be appropriate for the mayor to open the public hearing, allow the appellant to present information and evidence regarding the nature of the appeal. The original applicant will be present, will, then the original applicant will present information regarding the merits of the appeal, and then the public may provide comment to the hearing body regardless of the merits of the appeal. So you have comments by the appellant, comments by the original applicant, and then the general public. And again, appeals can easily get confusing. I urge both the applicant and the appellant to speak through the mayor during this hearing to keep proper decorum, and with that, I turn it over to the city council and the mayor for the public hearing.
Thank you, Stephen. So before we get started, I guess, well, disclosure, I did meet with both Scott and Bill Sturton on November 6th, and it was really more of a meeting I would characterize as a coaching them on how the process would work. They would come up here and appear before us and state their case, and that was kind of the nature of the discussion. So I did not arrive at any kind of conclusion based on the discussions that we had, and it was really more, I think, informative of me of kind of the nature of their concerns, but I think we're going to hear that all here as, as we progress, so.
I also, Mayor, met with them for informational issues.
And then I do, before we go to the public part, Stephen, I do have a question. You mentioned about 200 car trips that would be a threshold to cause a traffic impact fee study. Is that, what's the timeframe of the 200 trips? Is it a week? Is it a?
It'd be a peak hour.
Peak hour, oh, in an hour.
Yeah, the peak term of the day would be, normal would be rush hour in the morning, rush hour in the evening.
Okay, so 200 is a big number to try and attain, so, yeah, okay. Thank you, just want to get clarification on that. Any questions by the council of staff before we proceed?
I also met with Mr. Sturton, got a phone call at City Hall, and it's basically the same as Warren, just talked him through the process and gave him the criteria that we're required to come to these meetings with an open mind and see, I think Stephen said, any additional or contrary information that we should hear that would help open it up, something that the Planning Commission may have overlooked.
Okay. Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and I do have some cards here, and I will go ahead and start with the appellant, Scott and/or Bill Sturton, whoever wants to start, please come forward.
(inaudible)
Oh, yeah, that's true. You're done.
While I'm passing them out. My name is Bill Sturton. My family are the owners of The Cage. I'm not used to looking at myself in the mirror. First, I'd like to thank all of you. I'd like to thank so many people who have been patient with us, not only the city council, but the city clerk, Steve and his staff, the Planning Commission, and all of those who have tried to lead us through this process. We, we don't have the benefit of a consultant to tell us how all this process works, so we're really feeling our way through it, and we're really grateful that you guys would be as patient as you have been to provide us information. And as you can tell from looking at the responses to some of the issues we, we raised, there's no question they were pretty easy ones, pretty softball pitches to Steve to knock off. Apparently, we, we have, the patience of our, of our, of other parties have probably gone away, and so we, we hope that what we have done wouldn't be viewed as, if you look at some of the correspondence, as anti-American, which was one of the quotes. I, I don't think that's our process. I didn't, I didn't fight 10 months in Vietnam in the jungles to come and, and fight over a batting cage issue and, and think that would happen. But, but anyway, give you a little background on The Cage. In, in case you haven't looked at all the packet, in August of 2012, my family became aware of the opportunity to buy The Cage business from Vince Leoni. He had a two-and-a-half cage business that he was, he was having to get rid of. We thought it was a great opportunity for our family to develop some sort of indoor sports for the city of Los Alamos. And we took it upon ourselves, we, we went and got a CUP, and in our understanding of what our CUP was, was it was, it was for a batting cage. And as we read the, the resolution that granted us that, it indicated that to allow an indoor recreational establishment use batting cages. It also meant that we had to give up, Vince had to give up, or the owner of the, the new owner of the building had to give up, a CUP which read similarly, batting cages. And we wondered, when several months ago, a, a new group came to town and was going to build a batting cage within a baseball throw of our place, why the city had us, had an abandonment of a batting cage CUP happen, and now there's another one that comes in a few months later, and they're gonna, they're gonna do the same thing. But we were confused. We brought that to the Planning Commission, they reviewed it, Steve responded to that, and we have attached to our packet there, Steve's response, which he indicates that it doesn't say anything in our CUP about batting cage, but it does. So we would, we would ask you to look at the title of the resolution, and it definitely includes batting cage. The part that he cites does not say batting cage, but the resolution itself indicates that there was a CUP for a batting cage that was given up and one that was, was issued to us. So we couldn't understand why they were coming and they, they needed that abandonment. I have the letter attached as an attachment to the package that we gave you, which is an abandonment of a CUP from the new owner of the building. One of the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, but one of them pushed Steve a little bit, and Steve did respond to it, but I gotta tell you, unfortunately, from the back of the room, where my ears from listening to artillery rounds in Vietnam aren't so good anymore, I didn't hear it. But I did read it, and unfortunately, maybe because I don't have the Planning Commission experience that, that, that representative for, for the Excel Baseball has, I, I still don't get it. I don't understand why there would be a change in that, in that series of, of a way towards us who have, who have come to Los Alamos. We employ three, three instructors from Los Alamos High School. We invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in this, in our batting cage. We've done everything that we can think of to make it a first-class facility for the use of your kids. Not there to get rich, and if you walk in there and see how much we invested, you'll know we're not going to get rich, because it takes a whole lot of tokens to, to bring in the amount of revenue to, to get us back the investment that we have. But be that as it may, we did that, we don't understand what happened. Steve tried to explain it, and I'm sorry, we, we didn't, we heard what the Planning Commission said, but we felt we needed to come to you and let you folks read what we had put in front of us, and you tell us what you think. I mean, if they're, if they're going to be there, great. We, we certainly want successful kids' businesses, there's no question about it, especially when it comes to baseball. Our family loves baseball, maybe not as much as, we don't have the names, and we don't have the consultants, we don't have all of that, we're just, we're just guys that've never been in small business before. We're feeling our way around, so maybe we should have asked some more questions, I don't know. But we certainly feel disappointed that this would happen when, when you read, one of the other letters we have attached here is from Los Alamos Baseball. I think it's the, it's not the last page, it's.
Attachment two.
Second to last page. And it's a letter from Los Alamos Youth Baseball, and in this letter, he indicates the proximity of other batting cages to Los Alamos. And you'll see that there is nothing closer than 6.7 miles to this city. You'll also see that there's no two batting cages in any city. The batting cage that's referred to by the consultant with Mr. Kennedy, outstanding facility, but there's not a batting cage within two miles of it, and he didn't open his cage next door to somebody else. So you can see, if both of our businesses go away, and the numbers that I have, sorry, the numbers that I have, which tell me how successful my predecessor was, and I know how much we've made in the last 10 months, we have made any, that's a net cash outflow, that with two businesses, it becomes just that much worse. Why couldn't they be in Seal Beach, Lakewood, Long Beach, Cypress, Garden Grove? Why wouldn't they go there? Why do they want to kill our business? I'm, like I say, I'm just, I'm just first-time small business guy, I have no idea how to do this, but I know we went in and we did it right. And if you come to our place, I'll prove it to you. With the people that we hired, they're all Los Al, high school kids, and, and instructors, our, our baseball coaches over at Los Al, we did it right, and will continue to do it right regardless of what happens here. But I'm really disappointed that, that they would take away a batting cage CUP, issue a new one, and then somebody else walks in and they give them, give them the license to do that. Why wouldn't they encourage them, or why didn't you encourage us? Why didn't we get encouraged to go over to the Reagan place? I'm not sure whether I went there, but nobody said anything, "Well, you know, we'd rather you were over there." The general plan says, "We really like you over there." Nobody whispered in our ear. So, that's our story. My son Scott has a little bit more to say on the parking issues. Again, like I say, we apologize for any, what shall I say, inarticulate method of communicating to you our frustration, but we felt we needed to come to you folks and have one more pass at this before we, before we gave up. All right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Questions?
Real quick, in your packet, I thought you made reference to a response from Stephen.
Yes.
Can you tell me what page that's on?
It's, oh boy, three, four, five, we can't here, hold on. I think what I did is I copied two pages from the minutes.
Uh huh.
Of that session, and it's, it's labeled at the bottom, five of 15, but obviously, it's not.
Okay, so.
Five.
On that page. And then you also made reference to, to in your, was it in your CUP or in your, one of the documents that there was very specific language.
It says, "In my adopt resolution entitled, 'A Resolution of the Planning Commission Approving Conditional Use Permit to Allow an Indoor Recreational Establishment Use,'" in parentheses, "batting cages in an existing 7,900 square foot space."
Okay, and what page is that on, just so I can, for my notes?
I'm sorry?
What page is that on?
First page.
First page.
In the recommendation block.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay? Any other questions? Again, thank you for your, for your patience with us.
Thank you. Next, I guess we'll have Scott Sturton, please.
My name is Scott Sturton. Thank you again for your time. We appealed the CUP for the 10714 Reagan, because again, as new people, we have more questions than we do answers. And the appeal came more out of how many questions came to us as this place was about to be achieved their CUP. I, I went and talked to some of the residents there, and they all expressed their concern, and I just proceeded from there, talking to people, asking questions, researching. So with that, one of the things that we wanted is that, want to make sure that you understand that this is not about competition. It's been raised multiple times, it is not about competition. This is about market. And the commission, based on the report and the staff report that was given, it was asked a question, asked a question whether or not competition can be raised, be a part of their decision. They were told, "No." Should be right. We don't think competition will be part of it either. Market, again, I don't know, maybe should be. And a description of, of the example of market I could give you, the, I know the question that was asked, or at least the example was given, is, well, if we have like restaurant row, and we can't have one restaurant versus another, except, again, you can't compare the two, you have, everybody eats. If you have McDonald's and Burger King, again, it's not the same scenario, you have, everybody eats. There's a reason why there's a Jack in the Box and a Wendy's right over there next to each other, because the amount, because of all the people that eat in Los Alamos. You can have a Starbucks that's right there and just down the road. Why? Because the market allows for that, those two businesses to succeed. The census for 2010 was, what, 11,000 people, just over 11,000 people live in Los Alamos. LEYB, the Los Alamos Youth Baseball, has 700 kids. That's 6.1% of the population here. It's a very, very small market, and it caps out at about 13 years old, once they enter high school. It starts large at the age of five, they start playing T-ball, and we don't see those kids, because it's T-ball, they don't need batting cages. Six to about 13, and it acts as a pyramid, they start to age out at that time. Again, it's about market, not about competition, whether or not the market supports having two places. And again, that's, I, I don't know if, if I have the right answer, I don't know if I even have the answer, but that's why I leave it up to you, to try and understand whether or not you would like to have two places that are basically a knife fight in a phone booth, because there's not enough, there's not enough market to be able to support two places like that, because they have such a, because there's not enough people. The staff indicated, I'll, I'll go right into parking. So the staff indicated there's, there's a one-for-one. We believe that they used the wrong criteria for it. In the document for the parking, it has 17.26.04.0 parking space requirements, there is no specific thing for batting cages, that's true. However, there is a bowling alley, and bowling alley kind of acts as the same. You have multiple people sitting in a bowling alley, taking turns, much like a batting cage. If you can imagine, let's assume for a second that you have, I'll, I'll use, I'll use their place for example. So their place has seven cages, they have seven spaces for one. Within those seven spaces, two-thirds of it aren't being used, just a third, so you just have two cages. And within those two cages, right in the middle of the season, you have two teams. That's 10 kids. Per team, 20 kids. That's also 20 parents. That's 20 spaces. And constantly rotating through it. And as you see, in this location, not real accessible going in and out. And what they're doing is they're taking all the spaces, and they're taking, they're making sure that all the spaces get used. This place, like all the others, was designed for light industrial. It wasn't designed to have an all-kids recreational place. This is part of the new future general plan. This future general plan has not been approved. This future general plan has not been studied. I've looked, I've asked. I've asked for, for specific circulation, doesn't exist. I asked, I asked for, for what their parking requirement, oh, well, the other parking requirements were, they use the parking requirements based on similar uses, however, the similar uses us. And although it was reported, and Steve liked to compare the two, A, we were approved because we had 15, we actually had 17, owner gave us two more and told us we could have more if we ever needed to. The reason why we don't need more, because we don't have any other recreational uses around us. None. And in fact, after, after 4:00, not only do I have the entire street of Humboldt to private parking, but I have about 40 more spaces beyond that, because everybody's gone by 4, by 4:30. You can't compare the two. You can't compare a space that completely goes empty after 4:30, and then a space that starts crowding up after 4:00. You can't compare those two spaces. So if you can't compare the two, you can't use us as a reference and say, "Oh, well, we approved this one, so we can approve that one for that same reason." They, they don't work that way. And they even spoke like that in the CUP, and the CUP stated, "Big hours for this business are during weekends, holiday weekends, and, and when most industrial businesses are closed." Again, there's only one industrial business on that street, three of them recreational, and now they're going to try and make a four. Goes on to state later on, in page four of that. Additionally, these specific locations precisely where a recreational business should go, in part because other existing recreational uses in this development, which makes the recreational use more compatible than light industrial. However, again, contradicting the first statement on the page before about during weekends, evenings, when they're all closed. So, the last statement on that same paragraph, it's in, it's in the CUP, which you guys already have, which is page four, just above general plan consistency, and it says, "In fact, an overlay for recreational business in this area is proposed for study," in the new general plan. Again, it's proposed for study. It is not the general plan yet, that is not the spot, and someone says, "If you're putting the cart before the horse." Say, "Hey, this is-" Say, "Hey, this is what we want to do. This is what we plan to do. This is the future of it. Let's see if it works." No real study. And part of that is because we're asking these questions and we don't know how far the staff has to go to ask and to find out and to research it. And we don't think that the research has been done. We don't think that the appropriate questions haven't asked. You have a place that as, within the documents and the packet that you were given from the responses stating that they plan to only have three to four people at most within their lesson plans, then their lessons, three to four people at most. Well, they have at least five instructors, as stated in their CUP. So, within those five, if you have, you know, per, I'm not saying that's excessive. Let's just assume it's just three and they have three. That's nine. And then you still have seven, you still have, what, four of the cages? What are you going to do with those? How do those get filled? That's not counting their staff, not counting their, the two managers that they need to have, plus the person that sits up front. All of a sudden, these parking spaces start disappearing. And not only do they disappear, there's no room to expand because they cap out. You also might notice on here that between, so to the right of where they're supposed to be is Archery Outpost. Now, this is blank. I'm not sure when this picture was taken. But that area between those right two buildings doesn't look like that anymore. And those aren't parking spaces. And although it says 10 parking spaces, those aren't parking spaces because it's completely gated off. And Archery Outpost uses that area. So, that doesn't exist. So, as you get into the bottleneck of the entryway and then you try and get yourself down and you find there's no parking because all the parking spots have been filled up as the overflow goes, where are you supposed to turn around? There is no place to go. It's not a through street. It's an alleyway. It's an alleyway, and it's being looked at as a street and can provide as much parking as needed. It can't because, again, you can't compare us and our location and theirs for the simple fact that they start running out of parking. Good with that? Can I have any questions?
I do have a question. So, in your experience, then, how many parking spaces do you occupy during your business hours?
During peak hours and all condenses. So...
It's a number. I'm just looking for a number. What's the number?
During given hour, peak hours. I'm sorry.
Pick a number. What's, how many, when your batting cages are completely full and loaded up with batters and parents, how many parking spaces do you use?
20 to 30. 20 to 30.
Wow, okay. Then that's, we say, that's in the evenings and the weekends?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the council?
Yeah, I got a question. How many approved parks do you have?
We have, we have 17.
So, based on your same argument, if we rejected them, we should reject you then, right?
I have more parking spots than you. My landlord, if you will, I've already spoken to him, and he has enough parking spots to go, so we'll cover that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Not right now.
Mr. Sturtin. Okay, I guess the next up, we would like to call up the applicant for the CUP. If you wouldn't mind coming up and identifying yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Philip Schwartz. I'm a planning consultant. I'm working for Excel Baseball. I believe you have in your packet a letter from me on behalf of Excel responding to a number of the statements made by the competitor. I can tell you, by the way, he brought up Adam Kennedy. I did Adam Kennedy's project over on Kramer some months ago. And I'm in the process of doing another batting cage about 300 feet from Mr. Kennedy on the same street by somebody that Mr. Kennedy knows. So, there are plenty of places. I also have a batting cage program in San Juan Capistrano, and there are two next to one another in the same business park, next to one another. Mr. Mayor, I'd like you to know that we've read and fully understand the conditions of approval given to us by the Planning Commission and thoroughly understand and support that and also support the approval offered by the city staff. We're available to answer any questions that you might have on behalf of Excel Baseball. There are a bunch of folks back here with certain emblems. They might want to raise their hand, all the folks that are here from Excel, wanting to see this this evening. Mr. Mayor, following up on your proclamation this evening, you talked about there being 28 million small businesses. We'd like this evening to walk out of here and there'll be 28 million and one new businesses to get started because Excel Baseball certainly believes that there is a much larger market segment out there that has yet to be tapped, and they're willing to put up their money and start their business to tap that particular market and bring it here to Los Alamos. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Sure. I'll ask a question before you sit down. Go ahead. Any questions? So, I have one. So, we just heard from the applicant that there's a concern about parking. In your experience in the batting cages, does that sound, in your experience as far as parking, have you seen the impact of that of 20 to 30 cars needed, parking for cars?
I have a number of baseball batting cage clients who wish that there was that much activity going on because most of this is a drop-off. I have four sons. I didn't sit through their batting cage events. I maybe did it the first time I did, and then after that, I was dropping them off and they were doing their thing. By the way, the landlord and landowner is here this evening, and he can also speak to that. Frankly, I think we have more than sufficient, and I provided staff with a professional study that has been done and commissioned, traffic engineering work that was done professionally, looked at a whole number of these. And as I indicated to you in my letter, 1.55 spaces per 1,000 square feet, more than adequate. So, truly, 10 or 11 is more than we need, and we've got already guaranteed 18-plus. We could certainly use many more because of the way the layout is in that particular industrial market.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, people raised their hands in support. Could you raise your hands again just so we can get a count for the record?
I would say 50 people.
I would.
You can make it 51 if you want.
Okay. And there's another question by Mayor President Graham here.
Well, I, unlike you, stayed with my son when he did his batting, and I'm sure some of these mothers do, especially with the younger kids. So, I don't know that that's the standard across the board, but I do understand what you're saying. There was an issue brought up, and if you don't mind, and I hope you don't take offense to this question, I know you've been involved in local politics. Is there anyone on the staff that you've worked with before or have had any kind of a relationship outside of this exchange here for this batting cage?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
I'm assuming you're talking about Mr. Oliver or Mr. Mendoza?
Yes. Anyone on our staff?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I do have a blue card for Stephen Falk.
Honorable mayor and council members, I'm Stephen Falk. My family owns the property. We purchased it in 2003. And at that time, we were having a problem finding tenants. The property sat vacant for a long time, and we were approached by Kidnastics. We went through the conditional use permit process at that time, and Kidnastics has been wildly successful. It's just been, they've been a great tenant. We think they bring a lot of life and benefit to Los Alamos. And so, when we had another vacancy, we brought in Champions Quest. We had another vacancy, we brought in Archery Outpost. And Archery Outpost was an interesting story because that was a ground, a start, a business from the ground up. That woman had never run a business before. And we cut a deal with her where we said, you know, basically, we're going to give you a free month or two of rent to try to get you started because she had very little capital. And her business has just been extremely successful. And so, what's happened is we bought what we thought was an industrial park, and it's turned into a little recreational activity cluster. And so, when more cosmetics lease expired last year, we asked our real estate broker to look for another recreational use. I didn't know what was going to be, a gym or a dance studio or a yoga movement activity. And the broker brought to us a tenant who wanted to open a batting cage. And we suspect they'll just be wildly successful like our other tenants have been. We're very happy with Los Alamos. It's a family-oriented community, and there appears to be a very strong market for youth-oriented physical activities. And we're happy to be there and have the space to accommodate those. And we very much like the direction, by the way, that the city is going with general plan revision process that would sort of codify what we're doing. With respect to the appeal itself, we've put our concerns and our thoughts in the letter that is addressed to you, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? No. I do have one. So, I'm looking at your address. You're from Lafayette. Can you describe about the regional location of that?
So, I grew up in Lakewood.
Okay.
My, in my professional life, I am a city manager of Lafayette, which is in the East Bay. It's located between Oakland and Walnut Creek.
Okay. So, but you're a property owner here in our city? I was just kind of curious.
Basically, my dad owns this property.
Okay.
And he lives, he asked me to come to the meeting.
Okay. Well, appreciate you coming here. Okay. And there's another question from...
One good question. The person who's bringing the appeal spoke about an area on here that's, I guess, designated as parking. And that's not, we've been to Archery Outpost, so I think I know the section he's talking about. So, that is not parking that's available?
May I take the microphone to the photograph? So, what Archery Outpost has done, there are, this is Archery Outpost here. There are supposed to be three spaces right here, and they have converted this into kind of a outdoor barbecue area. And so, it may be true that those are not technically available now. I will say, if I may, one of the interesting challenges that we, as the landowner, are dealing with is what to do with this truck well. Because this used to be for unloading trucks, and with all recreational uses, it's no longer, nobody's unloading trucks there. And so, one thing we've talked about with the new tenants and with the existing tenants is if parking does become a problem, we can convert the truck well into like a tandem parking. You could fit six spaces there. And likewise, because you don't need the room for the trucks to move in and out here, we could also put spaces back here and alongside this building. We haven't done that. We're kind of keeping that in our back pocket so that if the council were to, or the planning commission were to ask for more spaces, we can do that. So, we think we can, we think we can address parking shortages now and in the future.
Okay. And so, that's something you're willing to do if you do come up where it's wildly successful and need more parking?
Yes. Absolutely. And I think in that instance, we will be very, our goal is to keep our tenants happy. And if they call us and complain that there's not enough parking space for the customers, we're going to work with them to address that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So, those are it for the blue cards. Any other member of the public wishing to come forward and speak on this issue at this time? Okay, see, now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back here to the council. And so, is there any other questions? You have questions?
A question of staff, please, a couple. Stephen, were these concerns raised by the Steurtins today, are they new concerns or they covered by the planning commission?
They're a little more perfected than they were introduced to the planning commission, but many, Mr. Sturtin was at the planning commission and addressed them, but broadened the base of his concern and got more exact. He's had more time than he had previously at the, he was just reacting to the application then. He has a more researched approach now. So, it's a little more detailed than it was then.
In your opinion, do, are the parking requirements still met after hearing his new concerns?
Yes. Staff feels that parking is sufficient on this site for the uses that are on the entire site, including his.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Stephen, when, and I'm not sure of the process, so maybe you can walk me through it. When the new owners of the cage came in for their CUP, did you mention that in the general plan, we were focusing on this area kind of as a kids' sports-related area to centralize, like we've talked about in the general plan?
Yeah. When the cage applied originally, when Vince Leona had a buyer for in his business and wanted to move the business, again, that was moving a business, that wasn't on our radar. We found out through going through these experiences, just like that experience of that CUP, that there was a desire in the community to have these uses within the industrial area.
Okay. So, no mention of that?
It wasn't on our radar as then.
Okay. Yep.
Okay. So, I guess I'll just get a few more questions directed to staff again. It was said by the applicant about the general plan not yet approved, which is true. But I think, Stephen, can you kind of describe, this has been like, we're in the year three of a three-year process on a major revision and update of the general plan. I know before this body, there were nine or 10, 10 areas discussed, of which this was one of them. Was it 10?
Yeah.
Could you just kind of describe where we are in the general plan? So, we, you know, again, just for the members of the public that are here?
Yes. In deciding to update the general plan, the city council has an opportunity of taking a microscopic look at various areas of the city. You usually look at vacant properties or underutilized properties, and you also look at the needs of the community and properties as a whole. This came up as one of the sites to look at, this industrial area. As the proliferation of these industrial businesses turned to recreational uses, we thought, hey, we want to preserve our aerospace and other types of jobs in the community. But we recognize that the public has a desire for these kind of uses to be in our community, probably as a testimony to the great sports history that we have in Los Alamos. And so, we started looking at a targeted area around these properties to create a limited industrial zone. A limited industrial zone would still allow the industrial uses, but would create an environment to also have these recreational uses. It would also change and codify those parking requirements in the future for these recreational uses. And then, after the general plan legwork is done, years beyond, we can start working on the infrastructure in that area to make it more hospitable for you moms and dads that want to drop off their kids in an industrial area. Because we all know it's not the most compatible area for kids, and we'd like to improve it. But the first step of approving it is laying the groundwork for the general plan, then move on to the zoning, and then change the development standards. And that's a long process. But we're excited about this one target area. As council knows, we've also worked on a target area around the hospital to let some of those industrial businesses morph into more medical uses in order to keep them off Cotella. So, it's another targeted area.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Okay. So, with that, back to the council here. Any other further questions? If not, is there a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Please.
So, I had the opportunity, again, of meeting with Mr. Sturtin, and I just wanted to thank you for using the process that the city affords. You know, it's not an inexpensive proposition when you want to go and take on the planning commission or the city council and try to go through an appeal process. And most of us up here have been through this a few times. So, I, you know, want to make sure, from your perspective, and I think you see from our council, we've really tried to keep an open mind. What I want to share with the public is my advice and counsel that I had given to Mr. Sturtin at the time, and I just kind of give you a perspective of where I'm at. So, if there's any more data, Mr. Sturtin, that you could provide that would switch where I'm at, I'd be very appreciative. where I'm at, I'd be very appreciative. You know, the planning commission serves at the pleasure of the council. We're elected to do the job. We appoint commissioners that hopefully carry out what we hope that we sold to the community that they want. And one of the biggest things that they've been focused on is, as you see, the redevelopment with the hospital, all the things going on in the city, a big focus on being business-friendly. And through that process, very similar to Richard or Councilman Murphy, was that the question that I had is, are there going to be more information introduced that didn't come through the planning commission already? You know, I'm very data-oriented, and I very much follow the process. And so I did, I was following this as it went through the first time for a CUP and then watched the appeal. So I seen very deliberate actions on the planning commission. They asked all the right questions. I told Mr. Sturtens it would have to be something pretty significant technically to be able to overcome this project the way that I seen it. I would also say I struggled with two issues. I struggled when I looked at the staff report, and I struggled after the discussion, which was, I'm struggling whether this is a competition issue or whether there's a technical problem with our process. And the very impassioned speaker that got up first that talked about, you know, they're pulling, you know, everybody's pouring their heart and soul into the cage. They bought a business. I mean, think about this from the perspective of the person appealing, because it's pretty compelling. You know, he comes in, he buys a business that's in process, and he thinks he's got it. And, you know, some people, I don't know the financial situation, but let's say that you just put everything you could into this business, and then all of a sudden, another business on the other side of town pops up, same thing. And you're going, man, you know, what do I do? You know, we should have more competition. And the one thing that the city does not do, no city does, is adjudicate competition. We have to come back to the merits of what was actually applied for. And that's why I asked the question early on. You know, one of the points that Mr. Sturtens made is, look, you're holding them to standards that are non-applicable, but if you back up, those same standards were applied to his business. And so by their merits, we should, you know, if we're going to reject them in one hand, we should reject them in the other. I personally have not seen anything presented new in this discussion, other than the question on the parking spot specifically. I think the way Steve put it is the items were more perfected or the details were provided. But I am still not moved yet on the appeal that there has been anything that's been worthy to really change the mind and to actually, you know, reject or appeal this. So that's where I'm at right now, Mayor. Thank you.
One of the things that I took into consideration when we met with the gentleman from the cage was that I think there was a misunderstanding. And if I'm incorrect about this, a few gentlemen will comment. I'd appreciate that. They believed that when they were vacating the CUP for the original facility of the cage, that that somehow was protecting sprawl from happening with that same kind of business. So they vacate the original CUP. They apply for the new CUP, thinking that that is disallowing there to be another facility like this within the same PM zone. So what I think that we could have maybe done better, Stephen, maybe we can do moving forward, is be very thorough when we explain these things. They were specifically talking about, or thought you were talking about, the whole PM zone, not just that business park area. So I think that's probably where some of the frustration comes from, because you were doing what the city asked you to do. You were complying, believing that that was securing you as the only batting cage in town. And I think that's the most unfortunate thing. As you said, you know, you've worked very hard, put a lot of money into this. You're a good community partner. You hire the kids in the community. And I'm going to be praying for both businesses that you succeed, because I think that, I think this is a very unfortunate situation.
Okay. Okay. So back to us. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we adopt City Council Resolution 2013-27, denying the appeal and approving the conditional use permit.
I'll second that.
So a motion and a second. A motion by Councilmember Murphy, a second by Councilmember Edgar. Is there any further discussion? So I will just offer this to the appellant. I think that, again, I'd be looking at facts, at anything that's new and that would move me to say that the city staff had erred or the planning commission. And unfortunately, I just don't see what had, that there was any error in this. Perhaps the biggest issue would have been car trips and parking spaces. And unfortunately, I don't see that as being compelling enough to hold up, continue with your appeal. So with that, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. And I'd like it noted for the record that my reason for voting no is not in opposition to the other facility, but merely because I think there was a huge misunderstanding that led the cage to feel that they were exclusive in the area. So with that, I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
Okay. So we have a three, one, and abstain, one. Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close this item. And how about we take a quick recess for 10 minutes, and then we'll come back here. And that way, oh, and before, you know, there is some cake left over. We had a little bit of celebration. Please come up here and help yourself. Meeting back to order. And the next item up, we're going to go back to the track, and it is the register of major expenses. Is there a motion?
Motion to move it?
Second. Motion and second. This one will do by roll call vote.
Councilmember Edgar?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Graham-Mihya?
Aye.
Mayor Kusamoto?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the consent calendar. All these items could be dealt with in one motion, or if they need to be pulled. And I do want to pull item C. Anybody want to pull anything else?
M.
M?
G and K.
I'm sorry. B?
G and K.
G and K. So we've got C, G. I'm sorry. Who want to pull? K. C, G, K, and M.
And M. Where's?
Oh, and I'm sorry. I also want to pull I. That's why I circled that. Okay. So we'll pull C, G, I, K, and M.
Make a motion to move anything left.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Passes unanimously. Okay. So on item C, and I asked for this one to be pulled. And what I'd like to ask the council and the city on this one is that we continue this to the next meeting and then use a series of some, I'll say workshop-related meetings. I think we're going to schedule those when we're dealing with the incoming city manager will be needing to look at performance metrics that we want to establish. And then that way, we can have a discussion and a little further in depth. And part of my reasoning is this, you know, I've been following a little bit. I'm trying to comprehend the Affordable Care Act, and I really would not want us to make the same mistake that Congress has made, well, mistake, the judgment that Congress has made. Because I hear, you know, anecdotally, that former Speaker Pelosi would say that in order to pass, in order to understand what's in there, we have to pass it. I don't want to be like that. I'd like to understand it before we pass it. And I did read through this a couple of times, but there's a lot of details there. So with that, I'd like to continue this. And if there's no other--
I'd support that.
I don't need a motion on that. Do we? Continue? Okay. So we're good with that? Okay. Next, just taking things in order. G, amendment to the OCSA, OCFA joint powers. Troy, you want it pulled? And--
Yeah. Go ahead. Can I get a staff report real quick? And then I got a couple of comments.
Mayor and city council, this item is submitted to request approval of the OCFA Second Amendment to the amended joint powers authority agreement, seeking to address the equity issue. The item was continued from our last meeting. Recommendation is approve and direct the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to the OCFA JPA agreement. Number two, authorize the city attorney to join in supporting the OCFA's validation action when filed, seeking to obtain a judicial declaration of the validity of the Second Amendment to the amended JPA agreement. The background is the OCFA was formed in 1995 to provide regional fire protection in 18 member cities. Subsequent to the formation, five additional cities became members of the OCFA. The original JPA agreement was amended on September 1999 and renewed in 2010 by a First Amendment of the JPA, amended JPA. The authority currently operates under the amended JPA agreement as modified by the First Amendment. And the terms of the JPA runs through 2030, though members currently have the option to withdraw in 2020. The OCFA's member agencies pay for fire services through two different pay structures. A general knowledge of the two different pay structures is helpful for charges addressing equity. Sixteen of the OCFA's 24 members pay for fire service through the structural fire fund, and eight members pay through cash contracts. The city of Los Alamos is a structural fire fund member. The cash contract cities were not originally part of the structural fire fund prior to Proposition 13, and these eight jurisdictions do not have a fire tax as a portion of their 1% property tax levy. Instead, they pay a contract with the authority for payments through their general fund. And we talk here about the city of Irvine in 2012, raised renewed questions about the equity to the board of directors. A special study was conducted about the feasibility of Irvine forming an independent fire department. And then it talks about the identified solutions, which would be feasible. An equity committee met over a period of 18 months, provided direction to the staff regarding these equity matters. And then there was a implementation proposal for a solution, and that's what we have before us. And the validation action was a recommendation made by the city managers group. And the court validation would determine the validity of using unrestricted revenue sources for the OCFA's budget for issuance of equity payments back to member agencies. And if the JPA amendment is determined to be valid, future challenges of the legality of the amendment would be precluded. The general counsel has advised that the appropriate time for submittal would be during the Second Amendment, and the general counsel indicated that member agencies may authorize their city attorney to join in support of the OCFA's validation action if desired. In conclusion, there are a number of benefits to be achieved with the proposed equity solution. Keeps all OCFA members together, provides long-term organizational stability, addresses the equity concerns presented by the city of Irvine, achieves financial feasibility within OCFA's financial framework, and protects structural fire fund and cash contract members not eligible under the formula from financial impacts. And we have Chief Jones in attendance to respond to any questions the city council might have.
Okay. Thank you. So Troy, do you have any questions?
No, but I'd like to start when we have the opportunity. Or is that now?
Go ahead. Yes, please.
So I had an opportunity, just wanted to thank Chief Jones and Chief Laurie Zeller, who is the chief financial officer of the Orange County Fire Authority. You know what? Instead of say a bunch of stuff and then get to the end and say, here's my conclusion, I just want to say my conclusion upfront, and I'll back it by my discussion, is that I strongly urge that the city council would reject this initiative for an equity payment system set up for Irvine. You know, I will say that the fire authority, I was a member of the fire authority board as our current, as our mayor is right now, for about two years. Very familiar with the financial aspect of the fire authority. Through the last time that we had this item set up, I requested that we continue it so that I could do some research with the actual leadership of the fire authority. And again, Chief Jones and Chief Zeller came and went through the financials with me. And at that point, what we're talking about here is paying out revenue to Irvine, because Irvine is a donor city, and they're at a point where they want to be reimbursed because they think they're paying too much, just to keep it really simple. This fire authority was formed in 1994, and as a regional fire authority during the bankruptcy of Orange County, it's really, really important that when we all went into this, you know, like they said, there's 16 structural cities involved, and each of these cities pay based on a formula. And that, those cities, people that live in those cities, and when you're structural, you pay through your property tax. So that they take money out of your property tax in a structured amount for anybody in our city jurisdiction. There are 16 other cities that do that. Irvine is one of those structural cities, so their revenue comes from property tax to their people. And it's a super simple math equation. But I mean, if we stay to the headlines, is this is a really, really bad precedent. You know, it, this marks the end. I personally believe this will mark the end of the Orange County Fire Authority if we start going down this path. We're, this is really, really bad precedent for us to be able to go down. I also think it's very bad policy. You know, what this is also is, it's not that Irvine, the residents are paying more than anybody else. It's really a battle between old Orange County and new Orange County. People that have old homes under Prop 13 are paying low property taxes, and therefore the contribution's not as high. People that have newer, expensive homes, like in Irvine, that are more newer homes, tract homes, are paying a same percent over a lot more people, and it's generating a lot of revenue for the fire authority based on a mathematic equation that everybody agreed to regionally. So again, what we have now is this equity process. The last thing is, I personally, and I know this has been vetted with the fire authority, but I personally believe that this move specifically is illegal. Irvine takes in its revenue through property tax. If they wanted their property tax lowered, they would have to go through a Prop 218 process to have their property tax adjudicated and either lowered so that they wouldn't be paying in. They're taking, the Orange County Fire Authority is taking in the property tax money, putting it in the general fund. And then because Irvine wants their equity payment back, they're paying back money out of the fire authority. Well, you can't bring in money through property tax and pay it out. So what they've done is they said, well, we have cash cities, contract cities, eight cities that pay in cash. So what we're going to do, Irvine, we can't pay you property tax money back. We're going to pay you cash back from the contract cities. So this becomes a very muddled mess. They've had legal counsel looking at, that's one of the issues that I talked with the fire authority. Obviously, it's under legal privilege. That's what they're looking to do. But I still do not believe that it's going to go unchallenged. And the problem with this is I think that we are taking one color of money and paying it with another. And the bottom line is, probably one of the most convincing things is Irvine itself, as a city, did not vote unanimously to accept this equity payment. They are fighting over what to do with this newfound money that they're going to get from this process. They have people in their council that want to give the money back to their community in rebate. They have people fighting for putting it in community, public services, and recreation. They have, you know, so there's a lot of issues going on. I, like I said, I think this is a very bad move. I think that, you know, it's hard, because the fire authority has spent 18 months, they've used the city manager technical assessment to be able to do this. But again, I don't know. For me personally, I think it's more of a political move than it is a substantive policy move. And I really urge that we join some of the other cities that are out there that have actually rejected this policy and really kind of take a stand. I mean, this is very similar to me, to kind of what had happened with the toll roads, is that, you know, it's cities that are in the structural fund that, like us, that are going to pay the price over the duration. If you think about it, this is four to $6 million a year payment to Irvine. And what I said before, I went back through the financials, I looked at all their expenditures in current year and their budget and their capital improvement programs. That four to eight million, four to $6 million a year doesn't just go away. You know, my concern of why we're doing that is what about, I mean, there's real services that were provided by that money. So where does that money come from? Monday, they are having their OSER review for all the equations for their retirement, and they're going to be looking at the duration and the rate of return on their pensions. They're potentially going to take a $7 million hit there, based on the writings on the wall. Everybody's watching what's happening there. So that's going to happen. So theoretically, where do they come up with an extra $10 to $12 million a year? You know, are, you know, are we going to have to worry about any service level drops? The last thing is, why do I think it kind of takes us to the end? Is if they are so fungible that they can take $10 to $11 million hits and afford it, then we are running a very expensive fire authority that potentially needs to be reevaluated top-down budget-wise and find out how can we absorb hits like that when we have so many other things that are out there? They're having questions and challenges in their leadership right now. There's just a lot of things out there. So I really don't want, I'm just one of five, but I really don't want to have Los Alamos compound this problem. I think we've got structural, deeper problems in there. And this issue with Irvine, you know, I'm not convinced policy-wise that this is the best thing for the Fire Authority, and I do think that, again, this will be the beginning of the unraveling of the Orange County Fire Authority, and I urge us to vote no for supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Edgar. If I may, before I get someone else, since I do sit on the board, and I appreciate you bringing up these points. Let me see if I can counterbalance it, then we can have a discussion. So as I understand it, in listening to the, at the OCFA board, your point taken about perhaps this is that pathway to the end of the breakup, but I think what, on the good side of this plan, is that it will keep Irvine in the structural fire fund through 2030. I think that's the date. And without that, Troy, I mean, this is probably one of those things damned if you do, damned if you don't. So that may hasten it if it doesn't happen that way. So there's that counterpoint. The part I struggle with is, the fairness of it certainly is that, and I'll give my own personal example, the home I bought, I bought in 2000. My neighbors, they have been longstanding members of my neighborhood, and their property tax is one-tenth of mine. And that's the inequity issue that Irvine's facing. And I think the part that you bring up, it doesn't stop. They build more homes, they get more property tax, they pay more, and that's just going to keep escalating. So that part of the equation, I think that's what the attempt of the Authority and Chief Zeller and the whole leadership there at the Fire Authority, what they're trying to do is make this, I guess, somewhat more palatable. But I do agree with you in terms of policy. I mean, I don't get to, I guess I can appeal my property tax to a certain point, but it is what it is. And I think that's kind of the same thing what your point is in terms of that. So I think one way or the other, if we support it, one of the voting, you know, cities in the fund, it may, as Councilmember Edgar says, it may, you know, be the demise of OCFA, and if we don't, it may just kind of be that breakup, and it'll be recast into a different form. So those are kind of the choices that we have, and with that, I'll, you know, I'll be kind of thoughtful as to hear the inputs from the other council members, and then we'll come to a conclusion, and that'll be my direction on how I vote at the OCFA board. So with that, I'll open up to other questions, comments.
I had the, Mayor, I had the opportunity to meet at the same time with Troy, and we've received communication from Steven Wontrowski, which I believe is on the Mission Viejo Council?
He is a member of the city of Mission Viejo, but no, not an elected.
Oh, he's not?
He's a member of the public.
Okay. He recommends the same thing, particularly in relationship to the equity as far as Irvine, Villa Park, Mission Viejo, and Laguna Niguel. I'm not sure deadline-wise, I know in our meeting, Troy, there was comment that there's a notice of opting out that Irvine will exercise and could be out by 2020 at this particular stage, and it's buying ten more years. I agree with you, I think there's something wrong in the process of what they're doing by taking other monies and rebating it back from the standpoint of property taxes. I'm not sure, and I know that they indicated they've worked on this for quite some time, but I'm not sure that there is, you know, that this is, as you say, legal in the process of what they're doing, and it does show there's an awful lot of money still in the account to be able to do this type of a thing. And even though it balances back and forth, it's manipulating of the books, basically. And I don't think that's good policy to get started on. I'm not sure, and I know we have people tonight from the Fire Authority, I'm not sure they have to have, I think, two-thirds of the cities approve this at this particular stage, so even if we oppose it, that's still not going to stop it from the standpoint of moving forward, but it does send a message. I'm not sure this is the right answer to the problem that they're dealing with.
Can I get clarification on your point there? I don't think it's, this is not an adjudicated tax issue, I think it's a simple majority. Does the Fire Authority know?
So sixteen of our cities, we need to have it passed. Two-thirds.
Two-thirds? Okay.
Sixteen total?
Yes, sir.
And how many have approved it thus far?
Fourteen, two against.
So you still have, you still need two more? Could you go to the microphone so we can hear you?
I'm sorry.
And tell us, tell us who, at this particular point, has weighed in against this?
The city of Irvine's voted 5-0 to approve it. Rancho Santa Margarita, 5-0 to approve. La Palma, 5-0 to approve. La Cincera, 4-0 to approve. Yorba Linda, 5-0 to approve. Laguna Woods, 5-0 to approve. Stanton, 5-0 to approve. Laguna Hills, 5-0 to approve. Villa Park, 4-1, rejected. Westminster, 5-0 to approve. Cypress, 5-0 to approve. Seal Beach, 4-0 to approve. San Juan Capistrano, 5-0 to approve. Tustin, 5-0 to approve. Liso Viejo, 5-0 to reject.
And I just learned tonight via email that Santa Ana approved, I just don't know what the balance was of the vote.
So Irvine, you said 5-0. I know Lala Way voted against it.
Actually, Lala Way, in the beginning, he was on our equity study group, he was for it, and then due to some misunderstanding became against it, but then got direction from his council that he would support it. And I believe he voted 5-0 to approve it at this council meeting. I can check, I can check that for you, though, but that's what's written down here, and that's what I believe happened.
Okay.
So the other side of this, at this particular point, since it appears like they're close to getting their magic number, it becomes a matter from the standpoint, and as I understood from the meeting and your presentation briefly to us last month, this does not affect any rate changes or any fee changes for Los Alamos continues the service, but we don't know the outcome with the OSERS thing and some of the other unknowing issues that could still have an impact.
I attended the OSERS meeting this morning, up until about 1:30 when I had to leave for a meeting, and they were still going strong. They break at 1 o'clock for disability discussions, and then they come back and reconvene the board minutes. I've got a text message saying that the OSERS approved a 20-year, and I believe it's for the, I want to say it's for the whole thing, but I'm not positive, I think it was option number two. But I'd have to check to make sure that's correct. But they did vote, and they did come to a conclusion today.
Okay. That was 20-year, right?
I believe so, yes.
So that's down from 25, correct?
It is.
So that means that the unfunded liability amount went to actually anybody that's in an OSERS, the actual payback now for unfunded liability is more, means Orange County Fire Authority will get the extra tax.
Actually, I'm not positive on that, but I'd have to check with Laurie Zeller. We've talked about it different ways, and it's somewhat complex, as you understand. It depends if we're talking, going forward or going back, and I don't know that answer.
Any other questions, Dean?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Just so I understand the math, there's 24 cities, you need 16?
That's true.
You have 14, two against, so 16 are accounted for at this point?
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Thirteen, four, and two against right now, yes.
Okay, so 16 are voted, so you only need two of the next eight.
Correct.
We want every city to understand the complex issue that we have in front of us, we want every city to understand what regional fire protection does for us, we want everyone to understand that. We believe, just like Irvine believes, that they are a super donor, their tax base does contribute a large amount of our, over a third of our revenue. But we believe more importantly that to serve the citizens of Orange County well, the regional fire protection service model works, and keeping Irvine in is good for the whole. And keeping them in till 2030, we think, is paramount to doing that. You're right, they can leave in 2018, they can give us notice in 2018 and leave in 2020. And we think once you start fractioning up the Orange County Fire Authority, then that service delivery becomes questionable.
Questionable.
Questionable, yeah.
Any other questions?
No. I don't know how to phrase this question. What I'd like to ask for is this. Councilmember Edgar made some points, is it possible for the OCFA to respond to those points? Would they care to respond to those points? Could we have a discussion of what Troy brought up?
I'm okay, if you want to do that, but, Mayor.
Are you talking about tonight?
Yes, I mean, he's here right now. But procedurally, can we do that?
So, yeah, I believe we can, but let me, you know, I tried to bring some balance, right? And I think we, prior to this, we had Chief Zeller here and Chief Jones, and they did kind of bring these things up, so if you remember that. So I think they're kind of consistent, but if you hold that, let's let Mayor Protem go, and then if you have questions, you'd really like to direct at Chief Jones, we can ask that, and see if there's an answer forthcoming, or if he needs to bring them back, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to ask you some just real basic questions. Troy spoke about the fact that in some of the older parts of Orange County, the houses are in Prop 18, so they don't contribute as much, is that correct?
The tax base in orange, Prop 13, right, 1% of the assessed value of the home.
Right.
A perfect example, I'm kind of along the lines of America's Motto. My house is in Liso Viejo, my parents have the same size house in Laguna Hills, and they paid 32.5 for theirs, mine was upwards of $500,000. My tax base is 10 times what theirs is. So do they get the same level of service? They do. My parents call 911, we respond to their home, just like they would respond to my home, depending if it was a million or two million dollar home.
Right.
So Troy's point was correct, we all pay the same assessed tax for the same level of service. But what happens is, is you get a city like Irvine, which builds faster, has more area to build out, build newer homes, we all know that.
I'll save you some time, I'm on that. So I mean, I guess my point is, we should be paying our fair share of the services. And so let's just say, for example, Los Alamos has a disproportionate amount of people who are paying the lower tax as opposed to maybe South County. The cost of the service is still the same, so someone else is having to pick up our share. That's why the fair share plan makes good sense to me. I think it's equitable, and it's spreading out the cost across the board. This would be for the city, city manager, and Greg, I don't know if you'd have this because it's been some time, what percentage of our budget was our fire department? Any idea, just speaking from past experience?
We don't have to pay anything because it's, we have zero because it's out of the property tax, the residents pay for that.
Okay, but could we handle, we have now said we want to join the Fire Authority, because what was our, what was our purpose for that initially? We used to have our own fire department, is that correct?
Yeah, let me help, just historically. So structurally, we are in, with 16 cities that basically agreed at one time, join now and band together. And they said, okay, from that, pay from the property tax. Today, if you're like Santa Ana, or hopefully someday Fountain Valley or Huntington Beach, or somebody that wanted to come and join, if, let's say Los Alamos wasn't in, we'd come in as a cash city. And so I think your question more specifically is using the cash city formula, what would Los Alamos pay today if they were a brand-new cash city versus incremental tax?
Right.
That's a fair question, and I don't think Greg would have the data, I don't know if you guys would have it. Laurie had it the other day, and I can't remember what the outcome of that was.
Yeah, and I don't have it with me, I'm not prepared.
Okay, so on my hypothesis, let's say we've got a lot of people in Los Alamos that pay the lower tax because of Prop 13.
13.
Prop 13, okay. So if we decided to break away and have our own fire department, could we even legitimately do that? I mean.
You'd be going down the same road that Irvine says that they would be able to go down, which is go to the county.
I think they have the potential to do it a little bit better than we do, based on their growth. And that's my point is, I don't know that Los Alamos, as small as we are, and with the potential for the Prop 13 to be maybe a little bit disproportionate to those in South County, so we're taking in less revenue from our property taxes, I don't even know that we could afford to do that. I know that I've spoken with our firefighters in the past, and there are items that they don't have for their fire department that simply would be a benefit to them because they're such a small city. And some of the larger cities have those because they have the cash flow. I guess what my point is, is I don't see this as an unfair expectation, and I think up until now, we've had the advantage of paying less and getting more. And I think on a very simple level, it's our, it's only fair that we pay our proportion and not expect another city, whether it's South County or North County, to help pay our way. And so I think what you're doing makes good sense, I don't blame Irvine for not wanting to pay one-third of the total cost for everyone. That's not fair. And there has to be a way to remedy it. Regarding the legal issues, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. Carrie, do you see where that would be an issue?
Well, the validation action would take care of that, that's, the purpose of it is to get the court's blessing for it, either the court says yes, or the court says no.
Okay, so we're not necessarily facing a legal issue, it's based on what the court decides, is that correct? And if the court doesn't, if the court doesn't give you the stamp of approval, what's the process after that? Is there something being prepared?
Yeah, that's what the process is right now. What we're trying to do is get all the cities to vote on it and approve it, and then once that's done, we'll go get the court validation.
Right.
If at that time, the court says that this is going to get unwound, some taxpayer group's going to come forward and say, hey, this is a color of money kind of a thing, and they oppose it, then this whole thing will stop, and it won't go forward. That'll be one way that this thing gets derailed.
Okay.
So City of Irvine will not get their equity, will have to work, will probably go through the process again, and will work down the road and try to figure out another means to.
To offset.
To address it, yeah.
Okay.
We went through a whole bunch of different models in this process, looked at the library model that Irvine used for the library systems, and so 17 months later, here we are.
So potentially, in the year 2020, they could step away if this item or this issue isn't resolved, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, moving forward, if this meets with approval, go to the courts and the courts support it, is Irvine stating that, for everyone who's watching and wondering, is Irvine guaranteeing that they're going to stay through 2030?
Yes, part of the clause in this agreement is that they cannot opt out in 2020, and that they have to stay the full term till 2030.
That's what I thought.
And they've agreed to that, yes.
Okay. Mayor, for right now, that's all I have.
Okay, if I may, before, back to Troy, so I think to Mayor Protem's questions in terms of that whole equity, so just to clarify, Jerry, again, as Dean asked, it's not talking about raising our property tax rates, because we cannot do that, that is something we cannot do. So your thought about trying to make it fair and pay more, that's just impossible. And I think as Councilmember Edgar pointed out, it is, and in some ways, I agree with them, it's the policy, and that's what we signed up for, much like our property taxes are what they are. So that's the deal, unfortunately, that some of the donor cities, as they call themselves, are, and it's not just Irvine, it's, if you can help me, Chief Jones, who else?
It's the County of Orange, it's the City of Irvine, those are the two largest.
And there's two more.
Each year, this model, this formula will be put into place, and it'll be, it could be different cities.
Is it Rancho Santa Margarita one of the ones that?
When we redid the numbers just recently, they're not one of the areas.
Oh, they fell below.
They fell below. So San Juan, County Unincorporated, I'll just talk about when this thing was first done, when we first presented it to everybody, it was County Unincorporated, San Juan, Santa Margarita, Laguna Woods, and Irvine. I think when they redid the numbers, Rancho Santa Margarita fell out.
Okay, so there's more than, and then, again, another example would be like City of Stanton, because of residential, older homes, long-term residents, and the revenues are a little bit different, and they also are a cash city as well.
Right.
So there's that kind of issue that goes on, so, and again, Prop 13 just fixes it, so, I mean, establishes it, not repairs it. So with that, that was my, again, my input back to this. Any other question? Oh, Richard, you had a question?
I realize what my question is now, okay?
You want to ask it?
Yes, please. If you'll just indulge me on the numbers, just assume they're approximate. Councilmember Edgar brought up the point that there's a $5 million payment to Irvine, let's take the middle number, and a roughly $5 million pension number. So you're going to be, you're going to lose $10 million. Could we go on that assumption?
I think the annual rebate to Irvine is calculated per year, but it's $4 million the first year, and then it goes up over time.
Okay, so, so.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not quibbling, I'm just trying to make sure we got it on the record. And I don't know what the, when OSERS made the decision today to go to the 20-years, I don't know if it's for the current unfunded liabilities or future unfunded liabilities, because I got a very short text, because I was at the meeting, and someone was just real, I asked what happened, and they said they voted and got the 20-years. So I don't know, I think there was one scenario in there where that 20-year was going to actually be a positive outcome for the cities and for the Orange County Fire Authority.
That'd be nice.
So it wouldn't cost us any money.
Let's use $5 million then, for, just for, but I think the basic question is, are we agreeing to participate in a non-productive system? That $5 million can be taken out, yet you're still going to pay your bills, how are you going to do that, I guess, is?
I think one of the things that kind of struck me personally, and I'm just going to talk personally for a second, when I saw these numbers, is, is when it gets to the end, if Irvine leaves and is no longer part of the Fire Authority, if they were successful in going to the county, discussing how they could get the structural fire fund tax money to flow through to their city instead of to us, because this is the way the tax code's set up right now, is all structural fire fund money goes to us, and they can't intercede in that, they'd have to go to the county and negotiate that.
They'd have to go to the county and negotiate that. And we don't know what that percentage would be, but let's say it's 100%. With Irvine staying in and us paying them $4 million a year, and it goes up over time, we stand to gain 134... We stand to pay them over the life of this thing until 2030, $134 million to gain $1,375 million. So if Irvine stays in, the Orange County Fire Authority benefits, all of us benefit by $1,375 million while giving up $134 million. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So that shows you how much Irvine pays in and how strong they keep us in the service delivery we do. So we do have some cities that do not pay actual cost of engine and truck company costs. So it's because it's the tax base. And so there are some cities that are donor cities and some cities that are non-donor cities that are basically taking from the system. But it's the regional thing that we have to think about and that together, sticking together...
You kind of anticipated my next question, which is, what happens if Irvine backs out in 2020? Then where are you?
Chief Zeller, we've run the numbers numerous times throughout this whole equity process, seeing what if, what if, what if. We believe that we can be solvent if Irvine decides to leave. We think we can do this. But we also see, kind of like what Troy was saying, is that this could be the impending doom for everybody, because once Irvine leaves, if they were successful in that, you could start having other cities trying to band and fraction this thing into a, maybe a North County fire, a South County fire, a mid-county fire, and then the regional protection thing goes away. One good example of what regional fire protection does for us is when one city starts getting, having hard times, the other cities can help with mutual aid and automatic aid and things like that. We're starting to see that right now on our north border right now. The City of Long Beach is having a lot of monetary problems and has been restructuring their fire department for several months now. We know that we've been, because of auto aid and mutual aid, we've been giving them a lot of service to help bandage it up, if you will. And we finally have said to the City of Long Beach that we need to bring this back into a more congruent service, where it's a one-to-one, sort of a three-to-one, and that kind of a thing. But when you start fractioning it up, I believe you can start getting pockets of where we say, "We won't go to that side of the street because that's a different area." And then the mutual aid and the auto aid and all that stuff, what we're so known for here in California, of great service to our citizens, starts to become questionable, I think, just in my mind. And that's my personal opinion.
It does seem that we have disasters. People do come from everywhere, that they kind of would overwhelm any size fire department.
True. And I'm not saying that our master mutual aid system would fall apart. It just taxes it more. It puts up more political boundaries. It, you know, just what happens when the City of Irvine says, you know, "We don't respond into this area because, you know, our taxpayers shouldn't support another city and..."
Okay, if we go back to your number on the... If Irvine pays $134 million over the life of the contract, let's say that's $5 or $6 million a year.
We would rebate them...
Yes.
$4 million...
I'm sorry, yes.
And some change, up to $134 million over the life of this 2030, until 2030.
Okay.
And in giving them payments back and keeping Irvine in, we stand to gain in property tax value from that city, $1,375 million.
That's about 10 to 1 in our money.
Right. Like I said, I don't like to look at it from a money perspective. I like to look at it from a regional approach, fire services. But for people who like to look at the dollar figure, by keeping Irvine in, we stand to gain 10 to 1 of them leaving. And we believe Irvine is a strong component of it. It's right in the center of our service delivery area. It's an important cog in the wheel.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other...
Yeah, just a couple of comments. So, you know, how fast we forget. I mean, the noble cause that got us together was the bankruptcy. And that pulled everybody together, and we forgot why we're doing this. And so, you know, Jerry, to your point, you know, we're in a quarter, and so, you know, 14, they only need two more votes, we should just do it. You know, we have options. I mean, we can go back... Long Beach has got a problem, just like Orange County does. And in La Habra, another Orange County city, they actually contract with LA County or an outside jurisdiction. I love the Orange County Fire Authority, and I have no interest in going to Long Beach, and I'll just put it out there. But again, this isn't a personal thing. It's a business issue. And Irvine is the first one to leverage right now who, you know, what they want to do through this process to get equity. You're going to see other cities fighting for their share of equity, too. And it just, and think about it, it's structurally set up to follow the money of redevelopment and new development within Orange County. And whoever that is at any point is always going to have an issue that they're a donor. So, you know, and probably lastly, you know, I'm not vilifying Irvine. I understand. I'm reaching out to Irvine and saying, "Please don't do this. Seriously." I mean, let's step back from this. Once we start this process and start breaking down this regional structure, it's for the greater good. You know, whether who's paying enough and who's paying, I mean, that's why this thing works. And like I said, if we have forgot the reason why we banded together in '94 to do this, you know, we're not going to see it. You know, just a counterargument, and this is a great point, right? You spend $139 million to get 1. something billion. Looking at it a different way, if today the Orange County Fire Authority Board decided, "Irvine, we're not waiting until 2018 for you to decide if you're going to stay or not, 2020," you know, in reverse, if they can... What I think, based on the financials that they're looking at, is that we are going to wait until 2030, and we're so conditioned for paying money every year that we're used to spending less to provide fire services. So when that payment goes away, that's how we're going to augment them leaving. That's the mindset. So we aren't getting a rate or return that's a benefit in 10 or 15 years. We are trying to condition ourselves to spend less and less while we make an equity payment, so that at the end, when they leave, we can do it for a lot less. And so I say, if we're going to do this, let's do it now. Let's do it for less now. Let's just assume Irvine's leaving and help them go. Let's not put any more money in new fire stations there. Let's not invest in any more fire equipment for there, since they're going away anyway. And let's start to try to use the money now to spend less and start to condition ourselves for the departure in '20 and not make equity. Look, they're going to leave, and they're going to get the money, too. I do not understand why we would support that. And they're just the first of many. I think that Irvine comes up next. Like I said, I don't want to vilify Irvine. I would plead to them through the chief. I did it through Chief Zeller. You know, I wish that they would reconsider this. I don't think that this is good public policy. It's a terrible precedent. And again, don't you guys think it's kind of interesting that first, we're going to get everybody on board, then we're going to go argue it in court? Wouldn't you want to get it approved in court first and then go back and say, "Now we've got a legal position. Let's see if you guys want to vote on it?" This seems like a court-leverage situation, and I'm not willing to do that. I don't know how you would go fight it out, and we don't even have a court reading yet on what's going to happen. I mean, if Irvine's waited since '94, you know, look, I'll be supportive of it. Let's see what the court says. Bring it back, and then let's vote on it once we know if we have a legal path. Seems backwards that we're going to go and pursue this thing before we actually have a direct legal reading. With that, I'll close.
Thank you.
Carrie, you're our expertise in this. Do you think it's uncommon to do it the way that it's being done by the fire authority, by asking for support from their members so that when they go forward to the court, they show that they have the support for it? Is that...
It's not uncommon. I mean, validation actions themselves are uncommon, but the other alternative would be a declaratory relief action. And in this situation, I can't tell you percentages, but they're both appropriate means for making a determination like that.
So then it's just the choice of the decision of which they decided to go, the process, instead of going...
Right. And I haven't looked into this in detail, certainly.
Right.
But I would think that maybe a validation action is probably a stronger way to go in than just a declaratory relief, because the court doesn't want... Courts don't like deciding issues that are not concrete, that are speculative. So if they see that, you know, 18 or 20 cities support it, then they're going to take it more seriously than if it's just... Here's a question, judges. Please determine how this comes out.
Okay. Okay. And Troy, you said something. I don't believe that I ever said, "Well, there are 16 who have already voted yes, so let's just go ahead and vote for it." As a matter of fact, I don't even believe I was one of the councilmembers who asked how many had agreed and who hadn't. And, you know, I don't know if that's an attempt to minimize my input, but nevertheless, that wasn't a statement that I made. What I meant by "fair share," Warren, and I appreciate you clarifying for the community, because sometimes I'll say it a different way. I support this because what it does is allows them to be reimbursed for monies that they're paying above and beyond. We're still getting the larger shares. Richard, I appreciate you asking that question, because it made it very clear that, you know, we are getting the lion's share of the benefit for a small portion that's being paid back to them.
Okay.
And one last thing. Go ahead.
I was just going to add one more point that I think is critical for the reason why we want to keep Irvine into 2030. At our last board meeting, Chief Zeller presented a plan to pay down our OSERS unfunded liability. We're going to do that through several ways, but that plan will get our unfunded liabilities paid down in the next 16 years, which will put us in a pretty good position if Irvine does decide to walk away in 2030. No one has a crystal ball. No one knows that if today, if every one of our cities voted no and Irvine was sent packing, whether they could walk away.
Right.
But we want to listen to every one of our cities. We wanted to critically think out this process. We want to make sure we've met all the needs of our cities. And with Irvine coming in, being a super donor, over 1/3 of our property tax value that comes in, and then working long and methodically, and anybody who knows Lori Zeller knows that she's done her due diligence 10 times over. She's a phenomenal lady, and just knows the inner workings of the Orange County Fire Authority better than anybody. She's done her work. This is a solid plan. I think if we get to pay down our unfunded liability, we get to keep the regional fire protection in. And then if they want to walk away, whoever wants to walk away can, but at least it leaves all of us in a better position at the end.
You know, and that was going to be my, one of my next questions, or actually a statement, that by 2030, if we can make it to 2030, that gives us a much longer time to come up with a plan, as you just said, for separating out. Also, the benefit to having a regional fire authority is, and when I've gone to some of the disaster preparedness events that I've been at, they talk about the benefit of that, because if you have a group over here that has a process, and then a group over here, and a group over here, and a group over here, and they differ, and then there's an emergency, a disaster, like Richard was saying, that was huge, you have the breakdowns in processes. And with the regional fire authority being there, it's all governed the same. Everybody understands, you know, the processes and the rules and how they're supposed to respond. So I think there's a huge benefit in having that in place, at least from the, like I said, the events that I've been to. So for now, Warren, I'll go ahead and pass it back to you.
Thank you.
Just to comment with Troy's question about, you know, the way putting the cart before the horse. Unfortunately, I think that's how things are done here in California. We vote for our propositions, and then they go to court. You know, they don't go as a theoretical thing. So it's... I can see your point. It'd be great if you could handle something, but I don't think the court, till the law is before them, wants to make a decision. They don't really actively go out of their way looking for cases. And I think it's kind of the same thing in my mind here.
But let me ask you, Rich. I mean, you, as at the local level, us, we're defenders of our taxpayers, right? This is taxpayer fraud, in my perspective. I mean, this, you take taxpayer money out of one hand on property tax, regulated through a 218 issue. We have to go back to letting the voters know, go through an entire process to be able to adjust people's property tax, and we pay it out of a cash fund, giving Irvine back... What, do they put it in the general fund? Do they spend it on Parks and Recreation? It was taken out for a specific reason, the macro level, and it's given to them to do whatever they want, and they're fighting over what to do with it. To me, this is fighting for the taxpayer, not... I mean, this is a philosophical thing, that I don't understand how we would get behind and support this. And, you know, to roll on this thing, I mean, and obviously, if it's a 5, 4, 1, whatever, but somehow, we have to send messages to Irvine. I mean, is it this easy to shake down this process and get $4 to $6 million a year in an equity payment? Even if it passes, you know, with 17 votes or 18, we should be one of the cities that step back and fought it on principle. It's, you know, fine, it already has enough votes to pass. Let the other cities carry that. I think principally, this is the wrong thing to do.
Thank you. Dean?
You know, I tend to agree with you, Troy, from that perspective. And I'm not sure... I've heard that the $1.38 billion benefit, even though you're paying out the 130-some-odd million, what prevents, what protects the other members that are in the authority that that's going to continue and that that's going to be there? In other words, from a business decision, regardless, I know you've said it's in the clause that if it goes this way, that Irvine's locked in till 2030. That doesn't preclude some of the other cities from stepping up and saying the same thing. We want to exercise our out. What guarantees do we have that it's going to remain the same through the 2030 period and allow the planning that Mayor Protem talks about?
There is really no guarantee that all cities won't stay in until... There's no guarantee that all cities will stay until 2030. Everyone has the option of leaving, giving us notice in 2018. The first out is in 2020. Once you go run past that mark, then the next out is letting us know in 2028 and leaving in 2030. So I think you can tell by the cities that have voted in the affirmative for this that there are no other cities that are leaving. The biggest other entity who gets a equity payment is the County of Orange. I believe, they believe strongly in this plan, too, although they haven't voted on it yet. But I think that, based on the vote that you've seen so far, that everyone's pretty much solid on it. There are some people who want to send a message. But I couldn't weigh in much more than that, other than that we all have the option to get out first time in 2020.
Any other questions? Okay, so Chief Jones, appreciate you coming here.
You're welcome.
So I think, one of the things, though, just some questions and points. If I understand, there's the formula that was established by the committee that Chief Zeller had. There's some cutoff above 11-something percent. I remember 11. So to address, I think, Councilmember Edgar's concern, the donor or super donor cities above this line will be this refund. And I think that's kind of that, I don't wanna say...
Movable target.
Yeah, but again, it's gonna move, of course, but like we're talking about Rancho Santa Margarita, they were above the line, but now, latest recalculation, they're below. So they get no refund.
The median number was 11.57 percent.
So that's kind of the fixed number between now and 2030, I believe. That's the way it's gonna be. And so above that, it becomes that the super donor or the donor part.
We don't see the County of Orange or Irvine ever falling below that line. But there are some other cities who ride right on top of that line, and then, like Elisa Viejo, a year before last, would have been getting an equity payment. Now they're below the equity payment line.
So there's that portion. And so that'll be, I think, a decision each of those committees will have to make. And I guess, would, if they start accepting that above the line, does that then lock them into the 30 years? Let's say Elisa Viejo was above the line, they accepted.
No, the only one who's locked in till 2030 is the City of Irvine.
So maybe that'd be something, if you can take that back to, you know, I can bring it up on Thursday at the OCFA, but I think maybe if there are those cities that accept that above that, we ought to look at locking them in till 2030 as well, to address those concerns that were expressed up here, right? I think the likelihood of Elisa Viejo leaving, probably small, but you know what I'm saying, if we were to ask them to commit to 2030, like Irvine is going to do, I think that would be certainly a question that could be asked, right? In accepting the above-the-line amount as rebate. And I think, I think to Councilmember Edgar's point about Irvine getting this money, I believe, and I didn't follow it that closely in the media, but I do think they have a problem because they cannot spend it on, other than public safety. I think there is that, I think, that color of money. Am I wrong?
No, no. In the original equity formula, the one before this, we've been working on this since the late 90s, since the formation, we've been working on equity. It was restricted funds, they could only use it on fire service stuff. This new formula, they can use it on whatever they decide.
Oh, I see.
I think what Councilman Edgar's talking about is, is that one council member, Councilmember Lollaway, suggested that they don't, do not use the money, that they return it all the way back to the source, which is the taxpayer. And the other, I think the other city council members have a grand design for the money.
But thinking about that, so how do you adjust for all the property values and...
Changeover.
That's their problem to deal with, if you should go that way. So, okay. But with all that said, I think we'll just bring it back here. Do we have enough questions and answers?
Can I ask one more clarification? The other part that Chief Zeller confirmed is that if you're short on cash, paying Irvine its equity payment every year, the agreement, if you dig deeper into it, allows you to make half payments and keep the other half as an open liability, like a loan, correct, or an open balance? And then you get to a certain point, and then we start, the Orange County Fire Authority starts paying an interest payment on top of that loan balance. Tell me one more time what that structure was.
I don't remember that actual clause. I would be just guessing like you are right now, because I don't have it committed to memory, and I don't have it here in front of me. But I believe that if, at any point in time, we don't have the money to pay to Irvine, then we do not give them a payment, is how it works.
But you keep it as an open liability. They eventually get it, correct?
I don't know if that's true.
Yeah, it is. We covered that with Zeller before, but I wasn't sure if you get interest on it, which is the part, I think that they get interest after two or three years if they still haven't gotten paid. So what'll eventually end up happening, if the OSER's liability or some of those other things come into play, will actually, they'll be getting a better rate of return than we get today in our life investments that we have out there. The other question I have is that, you know, at a bigger picture, forget fire authority, this is a, there is a significant macro item happening in our county, and it's the South County versus North County, and it's really heating up. You know, this issue is not unique. We're seeing the same issue right now in the library board, where Irvine's getting ready to look at potentially pulling out of that. Same issue, they're a donor, they don't, you know, they don't want that status, and the library folks have nothing to do with equity. And then, you know, if you looked, we just voted at the city selection for our LAFCO representative, and LAFCO deals with unincorporated annexations of county property, like Rossmore. There was a fight on the LAFCO vote that we just went through, and everybody's going, God, it seems like there's a lot of people, you know, running for a LAFCO seat. And the issue with LAFCO is that we have folks, and we had three South County folks that were running, and two North County, and you look at it, you go, oh, that's interesting, North versus South, but then you gotta ask yourself, why is that happening? Right now, there's significant issues in the water and wastewater business right now that are kind of getting settled in the county unincorporated. There are significant amounts of developments, and especially Rancho Santa Margarita, San Juan Capistrano, San Clemente, all these areas now are open up, and now that the economy's getting better, they're fighting out who gets these sections for their cities. That's why they're fighting to get on the LAFCO board. Again, I'm just saying one more time, if you think that this is the beginning with Irvine, Irvine's gonna seem like old Orange County in three to five years, and the next equity person is gonna step up. And again, I would just employ and request that we reject this recommendation, and that's my last try. Thank you.
Can I ask one question? And Warren, maybe you can answer this. Troy talked about the payments being able to be deferred potentially three to four years before an interest would kick in.
I don't recall, I don't recall the details on that, so...
So let me just ask you this question and see if it's logical. Let's say for the first three years, or the first two years, they couldn't pay their full payment, but they continue to pay on it. At some point, don't they become whole? And couldn't that be deferred, like, the first three years if it's paid, and the next three years, there's no interest incurred because it's only been a three-year period of time?
I'm sorry, I don't know enough of the details to answer that. So it'd be, I think, really a question if it were something we really wanted to ask. I can request it, or you can request it of Chief Zeller.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I'll look for a motion. Is there a motion for this item?
I'll start out with a motion to reject the recommendation.
Is there a second? No second? Motion dies for like, well...
Can I ask Troy a question?
Sure.
How about you, before you engage, you want to make a second, and we can discuss it?
No, I don't want a second.
Okay. Then maybe we got not to discuss it, then. I think that might not be appropriate, so...
I'll make a substitute motion for the recommended action to, I'm sorry, I can't think right. I don't have the agenda item up. Do you have it, Mayor?
Oh, to...
To support moving forward.
So to the equity payment to Irvine?
Yeah.
Support the validation.
The validation. There you go. Thank you.
So there's a motion to support the validation. Is there a second?
I want a second.
There's a second. Okay, so let's bring it back here for discussion. So any other questions, discussion? We have, clearly, there's a motion, a second, to support the equity payment to the city, well, City of Irvine, anybody above the super donor or the donor status.
Technically, staff's recommendation is approve and direct the city manager to execute the submitted Second Amendment to the amended Orange County Fire Authority JPA agreement, and secondly, to authorize the city attorney to join in supporting OCFA's validation action when filed, seeking to obtain a judicial declaration of validity of the Second Amendment to the amended JPA agreement.
Thank you, that's what I meant to say.
Okay, so discussion. Do you have some?
Yes, my question to Troy is this, and that's basically, I have a great respect for your business acumen. My basic instinct is to listen when you're talking about something like this. Would you like the chance to delay this a month to be able to make your case? Would that do any good for you?
You know, something, Rich, I really appreciate that. I think the short answer would be no. I'm okay with the will of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to explain what I see. I have invested a tremendous amount of time to make sure that I understand and don't say stuff off the cuff. I'm very worried about it, and I'll be voting no, but I totally respect the will of the council and the direction that it needs to go. And I don't think I'm, personally, after listening, I don't think I'm gonna be able to overcome in another month the problem that I see. And so, thank you, though.
You're welcome. So, okay, so we had the first motion that died for a second, so we have a motion, I don't think we have a substitute, we just have a motion, then a second. So are we ready to vote on this? And I'm gonna...
Yeah.
What? Oh, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote, just so we can just go through and be clear about that, so if you wouldn't mind.
Mr. Mayor, was, did you ask whether there was anybody in the audience who wanted...
Oh, I beg your pardon, yes. Okay, so is there any member of the public that would wish to speak on this item? If you can please come forward now. Thank you. Seeing, now we'll go ahead and close the public comment, and back here, and we'll put it to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Edgar?
No.
Councilmember Groves?
Reluctantly, yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Graham Mahia?
Yes.
Mayor Kusamoto?
I'm gonna vote no. Thank you. So it passes 3-2. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. And tell Chief Zeller, thank you, I really appreciate the time.
Okay, thanks, folks. Next item that I pulled is the item I, the meeting between our council and Congressman Lowenthal. I just wanted a quick report and to also express my gratitude to the council members and Mayor Protam that attended, so...
Yes. Mayor and City Council, the meeting occurred on November 4th. Mayor Protam Graham Mahia, Councilmember Murphy, and myself met with Honorable Allen Lowenthal and his local representative, Robin McCray, and we discussed the possibility of off-on-ramp at the freeway, Cerritos Avenue, federal sequestration issues with the lunch program, human trafficking. We had sent a letter thanking him about his work with Casa Youth Shelter, and we had a very good discussion. He pointed us in the direction of what he anticipates on the federal reauthorization of funding in relation to the freeway on-off ramp, and that we should monitor these programs. He'd be very supportive of that. He's also very supportive of the federal sequestration issues affecting the senior lunch program, realizes how important that is to the City of Los Alamos, and also supported efforts fighting against human trafficking. And either he or his staff will be visible and participate at those events, and he mentioned how much he enjoys participating and attending events in Los Alamos.
Thank you. Any comments from councilmembers?
Well, one thing I'd like to add, he did bring up, Greg, if you remember, at the end of the meeting, we discussed with him the LATV funding. And, Richard, do you remember, he said that there's going to be some additional options to increase the funding. Did we get any further with that, or did we just kind of receive and file it?
That was just more of a receive and file, and that's, yeah, you're right, we did bring that up.
Well, it was just kind of in passing at the end. But I do think that I would like for the council to know, I know we've gone through a great deal of, you know, concern about the LATV funds that remain and being careful to spend those wisely. And with this option, I think it was over $100,000 that potentially...
Yes, it could be anywhere from $92,000 to $192,000.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's a great opportunity, so I would just like to ask staff to stay on top of that and make sure that if there's any kind of compliance that we need to meet with to qualify for that funding, as we do for other things.
Yes, as a matter of fact, it was brought up last week at the LATV commission meeting, and there'll be an item coming to the city council at the next meeting for your consideration to support it.
Perfect, great.
Thank you. Yes?
I would just mention as well, I did meet with Congressman Lowenthal on November the 6th, two days after you guys met with him. And it was a more of a private, personal site meeting out of his office at his request. And our discussion was regarding the LATV funding and on the runways over at the JFTB to get that on his radar because that's going to be coming up in the future, and he's very supportive of the base at this particular point, but to get that on his agenda. So we did have that opportunity to talk.
And Dean, and I'm glad you brought that up. We did discuss the base with regards to sequestration, and we did also encourage him because of the fact that it is a location for, Richard, what was the terminology we used, for disaster...
The large number of users, really.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a Homeland Security base, which is huge. I mean, that's something, obviously, we all realize we need to be supportive of in these times. But also, there are two locations, the base and then the Rose Bowl are locations that if there's a huge disaster, that they will be locations that people can go, and that there'll be information, and there'll be task force set up so that supplies can be taken from those two areas and distributed within the communities that are affected. So we did make sure that he understood that we very much support the base and that we know how important it is. So I'm glad that you brought up the fact that the runways are still an issue for us.
So I think this one, just receive and file, we take no action? Right, okay. Thank you all. Okay, the next item is K, the approval of plant specifications for the Rossmore Storm Channel. And who pulled this one?
Troy.
Yeah, I pulled it.
Specific, or you want to report?
Yeah, just real quick, please. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this report recommends action to begin facilitating the construction of the Rossmore Storm Channel Improvement Project, and the recommendation, the city council approve the plans and specs for the construction of the Rossmore Storm Channel Improvement Project. Has a discussion here, and the project is paid for by Orange County funds, and our city engineer could respond to any additional questions as our Director of Community Development.
Troy, a question?
Yeah, just real quick, Stephen, or somebody over in Public Works. This project is one that we've been dealing with resident complaints for five years since I've been on the council. And the council's fought very hard to get the county to actually come out and fix this and concrete it in. So everybody that, in the community, will know, probably the biggest fighter is Ed Brimel, who has fought for this thing, so I know he's hopefully sitting at home cheering for this. But, you know, some of the things that, you know, I think Jerry and I are both hearing, some of the connections that people have from their backyard into this flood control channel and some of the effects, and you had a public meeting on this. Could you talk to us a little bit about the timeline for construction? We had a staging area, when I was mayor last year, we were trying to figure out how to stage the construction, and we were thinking about using laurel, or little cottonwood, which would destroy the parking lot, but in turn, they would fix the parking lot and put in a new one. But then we switched out. Can you just kind of give us an update on the staging, planning, the financing, and then if there's any client complaints or resident complaints on this project at this point?
Certainly. Dave, would you mind?
Sure, no problem. First, I'll talk about the construction staging area. Yes, we were gonna use Cottonwood Park, we volunteered that for them, and there became some issues, and the county finally said, well, we're just gonna give the contractor the right-of-way space along their own channel as an option to use. But in the plans and specs, it also says that the contractor can have a staging area anywhere within three miles of the construction site. They are volunteering their space to use. And typically, what a contractor will do is they'll look in the area for suitable land as close as he can to it, and they'll probably come to us, and then, hey, you got some space in the park, and we use it, then we'll go back to the same negotiations we had before, like, well, you can use this, but when you're done, we want something taken care of, you know, as part of it. So the door's not closed on that, it's not wide open, but it's still something we can do.
So, Dave, the construction or the staging really had to do with all the removal, the rocks that's in there right now is the temporary, right? And then the potential, any other concrete or breaking stuff than construction equipment, correct?
It's mainly the construction equipment, storage area, their trailer. A lot of times in this one, they remove the dirt and rocks that are in there, they will haul it off right then and won't stockpile it. They're not really gonna reuse any of it on this one. Matter of fact, they'll probably overexcavate it because it's so wet and muddy and kind of soggy down there, they'll probably have to go down about three or four feet, take it out and bring in more of a base material before they can put the concrete in. So we don't have stockpiles of stuff in there. So with that, it's mainly their construction equipment and their trailers that we're talking about.
And then just to end it off, so the financials, it's fully funded through the county, when's the start of construction?
Yeah, it's fully funded by the county. Like I say, we've, I think we applied like six or seven times to get this by engineers, three or four back from me, so...
You're not gonna take the credit for it?
I know, I was on a round then when they did all this.
Thank you.
It will, let's see, it's, just to know that it is going to, the bids are gonna open on December 11th, if everything goes well, and construction will start approximately 12 weeks after that. In reality, that's, they would like to stay out of the flood control channel from November 15th through March, or April 15th, and so they'll probably give a contract, but really, April 15th, most likely, you'll see any construction in there to keep out of the rainy season. And it'll be constructed then before the next winter season comes by, and it's about $2.1 million in construction. We did send, or the county sent letters to residents that had drains that were going from their backyard into the channel. The channel was actually constructed the same time the track was by the one developer, and all their backyards at that time did drain out to the street, and the county's kind of going back on that. But when people put pools in their backyards and are landscaping, they kind of say, oh, here's a nice channel, and they drain to it. So the county will go out and plug those things. We did have a meeting here at City Hall. We had about five people from Orange County Flood Control and probably about four city staff members, and I think we had three residents or four show up, three to four residents showed up. So they got a lot of attention, got all their answers, you know, taking all their questions answered, so we wish we had more, but that's all we had.
Great, thank you. With that, Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the item.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
I'm sure Vector Control will be excited. I know that when Ed was having a lot of problems, they were having to go out there and spray and stay on top of it, so this will be something that will give them a little time back to use constructively in another area. On the staff report, it talked about those drains that lead out into the flood control. When they go and cap those off, how will the residents handle that flow that was going into the flood control prior to that?
Well, residents either have to redirect their drains to the front of their house, typically, that's what they'll have to do, because when they cap it, it'll basically create a sump back there, and it'll just stay in their backyard. There are companies out there that do underground directional boring, it's pretty, they do it for sewer laterals, for example, so they can do it for guard drains, too. There's also one resident was talking about putting a sump pump in his backyard and then pumping it to a little, a pipe out to his front drain, was, you know, trying to think out the minimum cost that he could do to do that. And he was a resident that bought the house, you know, six years ago and wasn't aware that it was a violation of anything, so we've kind of been working with them and giving them ideas on how they can do and keep the cost down.
Okay, so, and that was gonna be my next question. For all of those people that had those drains, we've contacted them, we're working with them.
Yes, everyone. Yes, everyone. Pictures were taken by the county staff. We have copies of each letter that went to the residents and they were given the photographs on their site and what was drained. And then the county listed what, you know, their bylaws says about drains going into their channels. So it was all very clear. And they all said, come to the meeting, we provide more assistance. And also gave them phone numbers. So some people had called them and didn't feel it necessary to come.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure the residents were taken care of.
Troy, just to kind of echo on what you said. I attended the meeting and the primary one that was at the meeting was from St. Hedwig's, concerned about the traffic on Orangewood and any mitigations. And they addressed that. They're actually going to start, I believe, is in April and hope to be finished by October. At that time, their plan was to stage equipment in the storm drain area on the right-of-ways east of Rochelle because they had had contact with the base and the base basically was not responsive to them at all. Subsequent to that, I've talked to the base with the new command that's over there. And we've connected the contractor with the county to the base and they may use the base. The base is willing to let them stage equipment at the east end of Orangewood there, just onto the base property. So hopefully, it won't be in that area along Rochelle because all that's going to do is compound the traffic issues on Farquhar, which are already tough.
Thank you.
Okay, Richard, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. So with that, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public comments. And back to us, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Next one is item M, which is the Los Alamitos Race Course Track Extension, the initial study environmental checklist.
Richard pulled it.
Yeah, Richard pulled it, but you want staff to report? Sure, sure. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mayor Counsel, the City of Cypress has received an application to extend the track at the Los Alamitos Race Course. The application also includes the modification of an existing artificial lake, the extension of the existing fence, and the relocation of an existing camera tower. Staff is providing the City Council with the initial study, environmental checklist, and traffic impact study. The traffic study was discussed by the Traffic Commission during the November 13th meeting. Recommendation is reviewed, discussed, and direct staff accordingly. The background talks about operations at the track will include the training of thoroughbred horses and the potential racing of thoroughbreds for 20 days each year. The City of Cypress released their environmental review of impacts associated with the CUP on Friday, November 8th, 2013. And this report provides the council an opportunity to receive the information provided by the City of Cypress and permits the council an opportunity to discuss the information they deem appropriate. Listed for your consideration is reviewed by the Traffic Commission, which dealt with parking traffic, off-track bedding revenue, and operational review by Hartzell Crabill. The Los Alamitos traffic engineers began to review the conclusions of the traffic impacts. And the team of Hartzell Crabill, under the direction of City Engineer Hunt, will be reviewing the traffic study and will assist staff in drafting a traffic-related response. Non-traffic-related impacts will be reviewed by the Community Development Department. And comments from the commission and council will be taken into consideration by the city's traffic consultant in completing the analysis of the traffic study. The public comment period, the City of Cypress will be taking comments regarding the project up to December 5th, 2013. The Cypress City Council will consider the conditional use permit application, along with the mitigated negative declaration during a public hearing to be held on December 9th, 2013, at Cypress City Hall at 7:00 PM. And our Community Development Director and Public Works Director, Stephen Mendoza, is available for additional comments.
So you have questions, Councilman Murphy?
I'm concerned about Cypress' basic conclusion that this is, has no effect. Even with December racing, which is the slowest time of the year, they're going to get 6,000 to 8,000 people out there every Saturday and Sunday. They're going to get less on the weekday racing. But all that traffic needs to be accounted for. And I want to make sure we're asking the right questions to prod Cypress to answer some of these questions. In addition, there's kind of been a lack of clarity as to how many horses, how many new barns are going to be needed, how many stalls, how many stalls in a barn, those type of questions, I don't think anybody really has an answer for yet. And Cypress is just kind of writing it off as, oh, no problem. It just doesn't sit right. I'd at least like to see an expanded study that convinces us that their conclusion is correct. And so, you know, we'd like the staff to go really the same approach as Prologis with the EIR, you know, very thorough, ask all the questions and let's get the answers to make sure that this isn't going to affect us, both with the additional training of horses year-round, I believe, and then the five weeks of racing that are going to come in during the year. And quite frankly, I have been going to thoroughbred racing a long time. And I can't believe that the Delmar meet, which is, they're getting dates in November, I believe. I can't believe that Delmar is going to be successful long-term in November. It's a great place to go in the summer. I don't see people making the same trip down there in November, which means those dates are going to have to go somewhere. Well, San Anita already has about seven months out of the year locked up. There's going to be a demand for something else. And here, you know, here we are, right next door to the track that probably is going to get those dates. And there's a little bit of, you know, the camel getting their nose under the tent here. You know, five weeks could become a lot more is part of my concern. Thank you.
Okay. So was there any questions of staff or it's back here, back to us?
Back to us.
Okay. Jerry?
I would like to echo what Richard said. I know that there was mention, in addition to the existing stalls or whatever the correct terminology would be, that they were going to build an additional 200. And now that's not being talked about. And we saw with the Prologis how we were going to have so many trucks and then we were going to have no trucks. So I'd like for us to make sure, as Richard said, that we're very, very inquisitive about the effects that this is going to have. We didn't even factor in, yes, there's going to be the racing, but what about all of the horses being trucked in and out of our city? Those are going to be additional traffic trips. So I'm not sure how Cypress can say that there's no negative impact to the community. Also, we have a letter from Dave Emerson that brings up some very important questions. And I'd like for that to be passed on to staff if it hasn't already for them to use in part of their review. And that's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So Steve, going through this process or Dave, I mean, I'm very glad that the Traffic Commission was proactive in starting the process. I think our community wants us to be proactive. And I think I'm also satisfied as a starting point that they've been constructive in documenting what the concerns are. We're going to be involved in an EIR process, correct?
No, the City of Cypress is not recommending an environmental impact report. They're recommending a level of review below that, which is called a mitigated negative declaration.
So procedurally, if at a negative deck, what would be our role in that process? Because I fully understand the CEQA and NEPA process, if we had to participate in that and the input periods. But when we have constructive feedback in a process like the Traffic Commission, and let's say that our resident expert on this with Rich, with his knowledge of the industry, not to do anything to do with bedding, but he was going to go through and we had some even more good questions, what would we do with these questions then?
You would provide comments in the form of a letter and/or even comments into the public record at the night of approval. Both of those opportunities are given to the public agencies and to the public in general to provide input before the City of Cypress renders a decision. It's a lower level of review than an EIR. An EIR requires a formal response, comments and response to comments process. This doesn't have that level of review.
So I had heard one time, one of the residents brought up that from their house, there was potentially, they could hear speakers and stuff going on. So all of the concerns that we have, without a CEQA process, we don't have mitigations taken and declared and have to be honored. If we just send stuff through a letter that goes in to be read into the file, then do we not have an ability then to negotiate any mitigations upfront formally? Or does we just pray that some of those stick from the open forum?
This is a CEQA process. I don't want to say that Cypress is not following CEQA. They are following CEQA at the level that they feel appropriate for this project.
Okay.
They feel appropriate. We may not agree. And they are following the legal aspects. I'll let Carrie chime in if she wants to talk about what your opportunities are in the event they approve this against our wishes or against our comments.
Can I just ask one question before Carrie waves in? Because I want to hear that. So really, the policy issue for the council right now would be, if we really wanted to push in the issue, to push it up from a negative deck to a full CEQA process, that would be processed both policy-wise and, I'll say, relationship-wise, that we should be pressing to see if they would unilaterally accept that and do it, which sounds like, did we go past that point already? Have we asked them? You know, guys, I, because usually, I mean, we, you know, we just had a crash course in this with the school district, right? It's the same use, it's the same, you know, they haven't changed uses, they're just expanding the current use. But they're structurally making some changes, but it's all okay. So that same principle, they used similar mindset with the field at the high school. I mean, where are we at in that process? What is the action that we should be doing if we start to feel that we don't want negative declaration? And is there anything that you guys have already done to ask them to push it up a little bit?
We have not responded to Cypress. We were waiting for both the Traffic Commission and the City Council to chime in on what their points are and their salient points is included in our response and to give our traffic consultant more time to review that. It would be to tear holes in their environmental process and stating that there are impacts above what they've considered. Impacts outside of the area that they've considered in regards to noise, air, air quality as well on the western edge of the property. Lighting regarding nighttime, they've assured us or they've stated that there will be no nighttime racing, but we want to make sure we have assurances of that. You know, an off-cut statement isn't always enough. And the mitigation would be enforced upon them via a longer process of environmental. So what we have to do is shoot holes in their draft study. We took the liberties of providing you the entire environmental document. It's called a initial study and you have that in your packet. It is extensive. It goes through every category that CEQA requires by law, from aesthetics to noise to air. And noise and air are usually created by traffic. It has every one of those, including public services. We have to shoot holes in all of those areas to state that it goes above an area of significance than they've stated. We've got to back up that claim and then try to convince them in a letter or through public testimony during the public hearing that warrants them to go up a level to a full-blown EIR.
Okay, so, and if we miss the path between now and when this thing comes, I mean, is legal the only path we have then to slow it down? Or, I mean, because I even seen in here, there was a comment that says about the width of Lexington, does this trigger widening? Well, if there's no mitigations, we could have negotiated for widening, all right, or to fix Lexington. But in an advisory model where we're just going to submit comments and they're going to vote yea or nay, there's really no, and I hate to say negotiation, but there's no discussion for remediation or mitigation of problems that we foresee. So where does that potentially take place, trying to respond to what the Traffic Commission put in their report?
The typical response will become, you know, that they feel that we've raised enough concern in our correspondence and/or our public testimony to warrant a timeout. And they would direct their staff to revisit this and to revisit the environmental document. That is what we will try to incur. They could say, no, thank you. They certainly, their lord from a policy point of view can say, thank you very much. Our consultants tell us otherwise and we're continuing along this path.
Okay. So last question, then I'm done, and then Carrie can do it. But specifically, the policy direction needed tonight from the council, so that I'm clear, is concur with negative deck, but have comments that are strongly worded to them. Or second option, ask them to reconsider negative declaration, to submit themselves to a higher level of the CEQA process, or three, do nothing. And those seem to be our three options, is that correct?
From a technical point of view, what we want to do is make sure our traffic engineer is studying things that you care about.
Okay.
So from a technical point of view, we need that input tonight on the record.
Okay.
From a policy point of view, we need to know what council's feelings are as we go down this path and how much we want to beef up our response. Do we want to hire a noise consultant, air consultant? Are you looking for that level of review here? And so that's the policy statement. Nowhere, council is not being asked to support their use of a negative deck right now. We're just trying to gain input from the City Council, this fairly early date of this document being filed.
Okay, that's all the questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Did you have?
That was actually a cross redirect from you and Carrie. So I'm okay unless there was anything else.
Any other questions from here?
If I could just point out.
Can we let the others go?
Oh, fine.
Richard.
I tend to agree that we need to be on top of this, going right straight through. And I'm not sure that a negative deck on their part really is going to address the concerns that we have. And I think staff needs to weigh in. I did read the information from the Traffic Commission and appreciated Cypress sending over their public works person to meet with them. And I think that was a positive step on our behalf. But at the other side of it, I want to make sure that we don't get into a situation with any development over there at the LART that we're not on top of from the very start. And looking at the implications, as Councilmember Murphy has said, it would be nice to be able to get Lexington widened in the process. I'm not sure that that's something that we use as a negotiation chip at this particular point. I know that the mayor sent a letter over offering the opportunity to meet with the council over there. And I don't believe we've had any response to that letter. I think we need to be visibly upfront with them that we are concerned about what is transpiring, not only with the racetrack stuff, but the entire property, but primarily right now with the racetrack stuff.
Okay. Did you have anything?
I already went. You do have a question.
I want to say something just as well before I go back to you, Richard, okay, if I may. So in terms of this, sort of simple-mindedly thinking this, and I think I talked with you, Stephen, off on the side, but the racetrack itself has a usage that has been established a long time ago. They have traffic counts that go along with that permitted usage in their CUP. And I remember back in the old days, racing was a lot more popular than it is now. So I believe that from car trips and parking and what have you, there is a lot less usage than there used to be. So there's probably an entitlement there that the racetrack has that they are not fully utilizing. The other thing I think that we have to also factor in on this is the hospital. They have a specific plan, which has a traffic circulation element that has had to factor in not what the actual usage of the racetrack was at that time, but what they're entitled to use. So I guess I'm kind of thinking, in terms of all of this, it's, yeah, there's some concerns, but I'm not sure that we have really, I guess that'd be the question to staff and with the traffic study, is there really an impact from these use up to the entitlement that the racetrack has? And that's, I guess, will be the question that I'd like to make sure that we get answered. And then I think we can provide direction appropriately. But with that, I'll bring it back here. And Richard, you have some other questions or points?
Yeah, I just wanted to go over the history, what's happened recently, because it, we're going to be at loggerheads with Cypress on this. The track went to the CHRB, sorry, California Horse Racing Board first and got their dates, made certain promises, signed contracts, and they're supposed to run in December.
Of next year.
Next year. So nothing.
And July is the first date, this coming summer would be July? I think they're getting July dates?
They do have July dates. I don't know if that's this year or next year.
2014.
2014 or '15. But in either case, they're on a very tight construction deadline. You would have thought they would have gone the other way, you know, with the environmental study first and then go to the CHRB saying, we can do this. They've now made promises that they're going to want to keep, which quite frankly, brings me to my conclusion why their environmental impact shows no change, because they can't get what they need to get done and study the environment at the same time. And that's what I think we have to, why it's going to be up to us to, if it's going to get done, it's going to get done through our efforts.
Okay.
Thank you.
So back here, any other thoughts? I'm going to open up the public, members of the public wishing I'm going to open up the public, members of the public wishing to speak, please come forward.
J.M. Iveler. Like Richard, I'd like to provide a little historical perspective. When we were negotiating the Cottonwood Agreement, which created Lexington, the, at the time, we wanted the Lexington to be completed on the north side. And Cypress made it exceptionally clear, as one of the members said, they could not leverage Doc Alred into destroying some of his stables to widen the street and that we would have to wait till Doc Alred wanted to do something to the track before we could even think about that. Doc Alred wants to do something to the track. And this is exactly what Cypress said we had to wait for, before we could get the north end of Lexington widened appropriately. I think it's very important that we hold them to what they said, that when Doc Alred goes and makes changes to the track, at that time, we'll be able to leverage those changes to complete Lexington. That would leave the last piece of Lexington to be completed would be the Arrowhead Takeaway, which would be on our side, and we would have to complete it. But historically, from the Cottonwood Agreement, Fred Freeman and Alice Jemser, representing the citizens, went to Cypress, said, this is what we want, and they came back and said, this is Cypress's answer. Without any leverage against Doc Alred for any development on his property, there is no way that we're going to get Lexington widened. Right now, Doc Alred wants to make changes to his property. This is the point in time where we can request that the property be turned over to the city of Cypress so the street can be completed. If we miss this opportunity, I don't believe we'll get another one for 20 years. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration. And Troy, if you're keeping count, we had another agreement tonight.
Well, after three, the last meeting, I kind of lost count.
This is really shocking.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi. My name is Gina Berry, and I'm a traffic commissioner. Actually came, I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I just want to say thank you to Troy and to Dean and to Richard for your comments. I mirror your sentiments, and so I just wanted to say thank you for your position and, you know, I guess embodying, you know, at least my perspective, if not that of the, pretty much the entire traffic commission. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Shelley Henderson, resident of Cypress. I'm back again with the signal. If you're going to insist on widening Lexington, I'm going to ask again, can I please cross Cotella southbound on Lexington to get to the Joint Forces Training Base, please? Multiple times a month, I drive down Orange to Bloomfield, down Bloomfield to Farquhar, across Farquhar to Lexington and into the Joint Forces Training Base instead of down Denny along Lexington and across Cotella to get to the base. So if you're going to be a pain about Lexington and beat Cypress up about widening it, could I please get the signal changed so that I can cross to the JFTB instead of going a mile out of my way? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, so back to the council here. And we're going to have, in about five minutes, to have to decide how we want to continue. But on this item, is there some direction we want to, someone wants to put in the form of a motion to direct staff as to what to do next?
I think Richard summed it up pretty well.
I don't know how to sum it up again.
Well, then we instruct staff to fully research the documents that are being brought forward by Cypress. And Stephen, as you said, look for inadequacies or inconsistencies. I know one of the things that was talked about was only, was it just Cotella was considered and not the other arterials? Things like that.
Oh, Farquhar.
You know, just the full extent to see if it raises it to a higher level, to where it becomes an EIR. And not only that, but maybe some ideas of mitigation measures that we might look into as a council, should we not be able to raise it to that level, but do have some leverage.
Is that a motion?
Yeah. That's long-winded, isn't it?
Can I add in that, if you would take in consideration? I mean, what Warren said, I mean, there's a mathematical formula for entitlements that was presented, you know, with the, the comment that was made on the LART agreements, if there really was a provision in there that they would readdress this based on that. I'd be interested to know if that, you know, some of that is historical and people that really followed it heard it, but it wasn't in the agreement. So I'd like to know if I'm arguing for something that's actually in writing. And then on the entitlement capacity, you know, it definitely, that's a good point. And we should, we should have a balanced perspective on that.
Well, yeah. I mean, all of the items, obviously, that were brought up here tonight is concerns, but I was trying to.
Sure.
Put it in a huge nutshell. Nevertheless, include all of, all of the items that were brought forward as potential issues to investigate.
So we have sort of a, well, heavy motion. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
And so I guess if we can just kind of tighten up the motion a little bit and.
Okay.
Wait, wait, wait. I'll look to staff to help us. Is it clear, Stephen and Greg, as to the motion?
It's clear. I would appreciate a mention that you would permit city staff to use a certain amount of money for any consultants necessary to do this analysis on air, noise, traffic, other things.
So, so maybe if I might offer a suggestion to the maker of the motion that we, up to the spending limit that the city manager has?
Is that going to be significant enough, Stephen?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay. So do we have to even include that motion? I mean, because it's up to the city manager.
The ability to go in.
Also, given the deadline, do you want to authorize staff to prepare comments to submit to Cypress?
Absolutely. Yes. I'm sorry. So authorize the funding up to $10,000, which is the city manager's spending limit, and also prepare our response regarding.
As well as the research that.
Well, I already mentioned all that.
Okay. Okay. Clear enough? Motion second by Councilmember Murphy. Any further comment?
We just had a late person come in. Do you want to allow them to speak?
If it pleases the council, could we allow the member of the public to speak on this item?
We have to make a decision.
I know we do. But, okay.
You've got a motion, a second.
Okay. So motion second. Let's go ahead and put this to vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Opposed? Passage unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. Okay. We're at the point now quarter till 10:00, and we're not going to get to the talking the other thing until we talk about what do we want to do, continue to meet or, I guess, hold those other items, continue those other items in the next meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to continue if we could, and I'd like to.
We'll have people here from St. Isidore.
Got a motion to continue?
I'd like to ask, Mayor, are we allowed to, as far as review of the council meeting time limits, can we carry that to the next meeting so that we're, because I think.
I know. I want to go ahead, I want to skip ahead. So, but let's, let's deal with this first. So we have a motion to continue and then.
Second.
We have a second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and continue. And I will take things out of order. I will move to 12B.
I'd like to, I'd like to vote no on that.
Oh, okay. On which one?
Vote no on what?
From the standpoint of continuing it, we set, we set a guideline to try and, and control ourselves in the process of what we're doing. We started meeting today at 4:30 on an item that really didn't need a special meeting and only lasted 30 minutes. We had a reception which took time. We had, we had a public hearing which took a week.
I'm not clear as to what you're talking about, Councilmember.
I'm talking about extending the meeting.
But we had a motion and a second, and it was voted. Okay, so we have, it's a four, four in favor.
Four to one.
Against, okay. And your points noted, okay? Thank you. And I would like to skip ahead to item 12B on the St. Isidore. We do have members of the public here. I'd like to get some perspective on that. So with that.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, this report provides the basis of discussion for the city's future involvement in St. Isidore Historical Plaza and provides an opportunity to openly discuss the mayor's newly introduced proposal, recommendation, review and discuss, and direct staff accordingly. And at this point, I will turn it over to our community development director, Steve Mendoza.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I have not a lot of other information to add. The staff report allows councils the opportunity to openly discuss this newly introduced proposal that the mayor has provided in an effort to collect data on the site. The city manager, CD Director, recreation staff, and the police chief met with the Comité de Amor on Monday, November 4th, in order to gather information such as previous plans for construction, some estimates on, on what they thought construction might be in 2007 numbers, just to see what kind of information is available. We've provided a report that offers points of discussion without in-depth analysis that more time might have provided. We hope we've provided much information for discussion of this very complicated issue, but we understand we've provided you a, a surface level of a lot of topics and in-depth analysis of no topics. And we, we understand that. We apologize for that. But we wanted to get the discussion starting from the full council.
Thank you. So back to us. And so since I brought this up, and I guess just for members of the public and, and the council too, and Mayor Protem, Grammy and I were discussing this one day. We were at the plaza and enjoying the Tuesday food truck, and we got to talking as to how to preserve it. And the question that I have in my mind, and there's kind of two things. I know the Committee de Amor is raising the funds to acquire the property and gift it to the city, and my fear is, if they gift it to the city, then what? And, and is it a, a cost burden to the taxpayer? So, so part of the question is, what is the holding cost, the operational and holding cost of such a property? And then as well as the acquisition and refurbishment costs? So that was the information I was seeking to have a, a discussion up here to see, then would we want to put that to the voters in our city? And, and I, and I think that this is where I'm not real clear as to how a ballot measure might work, but if it were to be a parcel tax, and city attorney, you might help, can you help me with this? If it's a parcel tax and it's a, the property owners, businesses as well as residents, are those the ones that vote on it, or is it just the population of the city if it's a parcel tax?
Just the voters.
Just, oh, the total voters of the city? Okay.
Whether it's total voters or property owners, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Okay. So that would be, if it's a total voters, and I certainly would not be supportive of that, because there may be inequities and who really pays? But if it's the property owners and business owners that somehow get this vote, that's where I was looking at, is that possible revenue stream? But I guess the question I really don't really have clarity on is the acquisition as well as refurbishment. So that'd be the, the data points that I'd be looking for. So that's kind of where I was coming from. And then I'll bring it back here to council, I think. Council, I mean, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Grammy here?
One of the things that I, I was discussing with the resident, you know, what they thought about this idea, and they were supportive, but their concerns were if the city were to be successful in whatever form of a tax, to be able to acquire the, the location, the church there and the surrounding buildings, that they're in disrepair and that, no insult to staff, but anytime the city does something, it costs a lot more than it does in the private sector. So the improvements to the property would cost more if the city were to own it. So here's a, here's a question. What if we were to, in this process, ask the Comité de Amor to sit down with the diocese and maybe a representative from the city, I'm not sure, to discuss with them if the money that's been raised up until this point could be put into improvements to retrofit the building, you know, replace the peeling plaster that's on the ceiling, bring it up to what the, the code would say it would have to be? I think that that would put us in a position where then we could, to the community, say, listen, these people have worked so hard, it's a historical building, we'd love to, we'd love to preserve it forever for the future of this community. They've, they've done the improvements, they've brought it up to the quality that, and standards that are expected. Now, we would be receiving something that we could use as a community building in whatever aspect we choose that's listed in these staff reports.
Okay. So those questions.
So that's a question. So, you know, moving forward, I think that if we were to work with Committee de Amor and the diocese, or I guess it would be St. Hedwicks now, to see if we could work those things out, I think it would be a lot easier for us to bring this forward.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Thoughts?
None.
Okay.
What about folks?
Are you going to allow the public?
Sure. Okay. Okay. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Please come forward.
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have a card, so let me let Bruce Murphy go first, if I may.
Swoop.
Thank you very much. I'm Bruce Murphy, current president of Committee de Amor. And I wanted to thank the mayor and, and Mayor Protem for their support in proposing the ballot measure. Unfortunately, the executive council of the Committee was never contracted prior to the ballot being put on the agenda. So we really had no input into any part of it. In the 14 years that the Committee de Amor has been in existence, we have never asked or proposed our membership that taxpayers of Los Almeos foot the bill for the purchase of the plaza. We brought forth the proposition that after we purchase and retrofit the chapel, we would apply for historical site status with the State of California and the federal government. After that is completed, we would consider a historical gift to the city of Los Almeos in partnership with Committee de Amor as a foundation board with continued fundraising to help support the maintenance, staffing of the plaza, and program similar to the relationship between Dixie Ranch and the city of Long Beach. There are many ways that the city of Los Almeos and the committee can form a partnership that does not require a ballot measure. Recently, the county considered a community giveback with excess funds. That could be one avenue that the city could form a financial partnership with the committee that could benefit the whole community. We are currently in talks with the Diocese of Orange to purchase the plaza. We find this ballot measure a bit of a distraction and could hinder our fundraising efforts. At this time, we cannot support the ballot measure. That would tax the people of Los Almeos. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. And I appreciate that. And I know, I agree, we just did this in a vacuum. We were there and enjoying it, so, but appreciate your comments.
In 1975, a building was conveyed to the city of Los Almeos. We've put no roofs on it. We've done other capital improvements. We pay $3,000 a year for it. It's open 208 hours a year for the community. I mentioned it earlier. You would hope that we would learn from past experience not to do this. You know, I remember a number of people when we purchased the CIF building saying, what are you doing? Don't do this. It's not wise. I don't believe it's wise. I also don't believe that a city that has reduced their meetings, can't afford a phone system, should be even thinking about spending $30,000 of the money we don't have on a ballot It's nice to know the Committee de Amor doesn't want it either. It's nice to be on the same page with them. I wish them the best of luck in all their fundraising and their efforts to obtain the building and do what they want with the building. But I don't believe that the city of Los Almeos should be involved in any way, shape or form. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item?
I appreciate the council's interest in working with the committee. I appreciate the committee's interest in not having a tax. I think everyone's working toward the same goal. I just want to point out, we, we have very little history left of what we had once, and most of what's left is single-family residences. And as a Realtor, I think it would be nice for city staff to expend some effort into what can be done, and I know the museum is very interested in this as well, to encourage or allow preservation of the few historic homes we still have left in Old Town on both sides, but mostly over on this side. Those are treasures, and anything we can do to encourage the owners not to demo them for condos or townhomes, which is the economic incentive, frankly, but whatever we can do to reward or that, I don't want to detract from what Committee de Amor is doing, but I think the museum members are very aware, and I know former. I think the museum members are very aware, and I know former Mayor Poe has been very involved in trying to preserve the homes too, and I think that's just as important. All of those, once they're gone, they're gone, and a lot of them are strip centers now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening, members of the council. Mayor, I'm John Underwood, and I've had occasion over the years to document much of what has happened at the Plaza. And even prior to that, I was involved, to probably all of your surprise, in the late 70s, an attempt to preserve for historical purposes for the city of Los Alamos, along with a previous council member, Anthony Salvagi, a number of foreman houses that were, that had survived, actually survived, the old Sugar Beet Factory. They were foreman houses for the Sugar Beet Factory. In fact, the last standing buildings that represented a great deal of Los Alamos's history. That effort forestalled that those foreman shacks becoming what eventually did become a contractor's storage yard and headquarters for a contractor. Not quite the same thing. We lost a great deal when we lost those foreman shacks, real, in fact, physical evidence of our history of Los Alamos. And I hope that the council will not make that mistake again. You were not there at that time, you were not there to make that mistake, but a previous council did in the late 70s, and I would like to not see that same history repeat itself over this Plaza, which, like those foreman houses on Serpentine Drive, were in fact, are in fact, not just a set of buildings over there. They are a living, breathing, historical accounting of not just who we were at one point in time, but who we are today. And I think if we turn to some of the events that we have covered at LATV at the Plaza, the fiestas, and a plethora of events over there, we understand that what we have over there is not just a historical building, but a living and breathing historical presence here in Los Alamos, which itself is an extremely historyed experience among Orange County communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comments on this. And back here to the council. So, I'll try a motion on this one. So, you know, thank you, Bruce, for appearing here. I'll just move.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, I did some quick research on my phone here. Parcel tax is just voted on by the voters, and it requires a two-thirds vote approved for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask Bruce a couple of questions?
Sure. Bruce, would you mind entertaining some questions? Appreciate it if you can. Thank you.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Good to see you. Thanks for coming tonight. We've been at a couple of your events where many of the people there have said to me personally, what can you do to help us? So, knowing what Troy has done in the past, and that there's a certain amount of money that the church is asking from you, and the amount of money that you had, which is, you know, can have changed, I guess, because you've done some fundraisers, but we were understanding that there was a pressure of time to make sure that if we were going to help you, that we needed to move quickly, because by, what was it, March of next year, there's not going to be any moving forward. So, can I ask you, are you getting close to your target amount?
Well, we actually are meeting with them on Thursday.
Okay.
And part of the discussion will be about that.
Okay.
To answer your question, I'll know more Thursday if we're closer to our figure or not. But at this point, the deadline you're talking about is actually be March 1st, that we have to give them a decision. But this meeting, we've been asked for, it's been for six months now, and we're finally getting the meeting. I think if we come up against that date, it could be moved, because they're the ones that have been delaying because of some of the things within the diocese, obviously Christ Cathedral and some other.
Right.
Things that are a bit more important, I guess, to them, to us. But at any rate, we'll know more certainly by your next council meeting where we stand.
Okay.
With them. At this point, I think that, as I said in our meeting with Steve on November 4th, the committee can buy the property. We're convinced of that. We feel that from our discussions with the diocese, it will come about.
Okay.
And there would be some roadblocks anyway, because of our purchase agreement with them is with us, not with the city.
Right.
So, at this point, we want to purchase it and go forward with our plan, which again was to convert it into a state historical site.
Right.
And then do our preservation, and then hopefully turn it over to the city.
Well, yeah, that's much more desirable. That was not the information we were getting, was that you were up a deadline, and there were not going to be any more extensions. So, we were trying to act on behalf of you to help you.
No. The truth is that we can have extensions, but it comes at a price.
Oh.
And the price is that the money that we have given them would become essentially hard money that would not apply to the purchase price.
Okay.
We feel that we can buy the Plaza by the May 31st deadline.
Great.
So, again, I'll know more after this meeting that we're having, and after that, we'll have firm plans for the way we're going to do it.
Perfect.
But there is a lot more to be done at the Plaza after we purchase it. As we talked about in our meeting with Steve, a lot of the things that we were talking about, none of it could come about until we purchased the Plaza. Since we don't own the property, we can't, you know, put in a request for historical site, we can't, we're forbidden to use the chapel.
Right.
In our lease agreement. So, once we purchase it, then we'll be able to open all that up and make, start the plans to have it retrofitted so it would be safe for the public.
Perfect, perfect. We just wanted to act, because that was not the information that we were given, is that you were up against that deadline, like we said. We would never want to interfere with all the hard work you've been doing for all these years.
No, it wasn't so much that interference is that we weren't really consulted, the executive committee, I mean, there's conversations, of course, all the time, but to sit down and say, we're thinking of doing this, what's your input?
Right.
We would have had the same discussion we're having right now.
My apologies. Maybe we should have done that. And I guess, Bruce, my perception was that certain people that I know that are part of, maybe not necessarily that executive committee, that are part of a board, were reaching out to me specifically and saying, help us. So, again, my apologies.
I'm not saying, don't help us.
Yeah.
Seriously.
Okay.
But we just feel that the two problems you would have with you helping us purchase is, one, I think it'd be a real uphill battle to get it passed, period. It does create an issue, we'd have to go back to them and ask them to wait at least until November of 2014, and then pass that, because we really couldn't make any plans until we found out what the vote was. The other one is, again, the diocese, we have a purchase agreement with them, the committee does, and for us to try to substitute the city in there, I really don't know what their response would be.
Totally understand, totally understand. Thank you for coming tonight. Sorry you had to wait for such a long time.
It's worth the wait. Thank you.
Could I ask?
Sure.
On your agreement, is the purchase price is a million two, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I'd like to maybe try to help you out in a way with, you know, there's several parcels of land for sale on Cattella. Supermedia site, they're asking about a million seven an acre. Prologius was a million dollars an acre. So, I'm assuming somewhere in between, it's a smaller site, doesn't quite have the build ability of the larger sites, let's say, let's say a million one to a million two for the raw land is a fair price. You have seven tenths of an acre, which leads to 800, would leave a price of $840,000. You have a large building bill just to bring the property into code and usable shape. I would suggest to you and to whoever you negotiate with, that the true value of this property is roughly a third of what you're contracted for. I mean, if I was looking to buy, I would think that that would be a fair price. Neither, you know, to me, a fair price is when both sides are unhappy. But I think that your contract that you have now, I think prices that property way too high.
Well, since we're in negotiations and speaking with them right now, I'd really rather not comment on.
That's fine.
Pricing and so on. However, the diocese has made it clear that they want to sell us the property.
Okay.
So, I think that works in our favor.
Great, thank you very much. So, back to us, and I'll try and attempt a motion, see if you can get some support. So, I will move that we do nothing on this, we take it in and file, and I do want to thank, part of that motion is, thank staff for doing the research that they've done and reaching out to the committee, and that my motion is basically receive and file.
Well, I'll second it, since I.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'd like to abstain. I'm on the board of the committee.
So, we have a four, oh, and one extension. Thank you, Troy, for that.
No, I didn't vote. Oh, you went too fast for me.
I'm sorry.
Wake up, Richard.
I'm wide awake, believe me. I put more hours in on this issue than any single issue that, since I've been on the board.
Okay.
I just want to suggest that we need to have a discussion within the city, including the committee, as to what's important at St. Isidors? What are we trying to save? How does it help the city go forward by, if we are able to get the property? It's, and thankfully, now we have time to have that discussion.
Okay.
But it, and I will vote yes.
Okay.
Now that I got my chance to say that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. So, it's four, zero, with a one extension. Thank you. Okay. Now, backtracking a little bit, we've got 12A, and I think there's a suggestion that we continue this till the next meeting, in the interest of time.
Warren, 11A as well?
I'm sorry, 11A? I'm sorry, what's 11A? Oh, yes, we do want to deal with 11A. Thank you. 11A, it is the Urgency Ordinance Number 13-09 for a three-hour time limit parking restriction at Laurel Park Parking Lot. And maybe we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is an urgency ordinance so that the police department could immediately begin enforcing this parking restriction by issuing citations. And the recommendation is to waive the reading and authorize by title only the ordinance and adopt the ordinance 1309 by roll call vote of urgency ordinance.
Okay. Any questions, staff here? Go ahead, Dean.
I had raised some questions earlier, and I got some answers. I'm not, I'm not clear. We took action on this back in, apparently, September, even though there's reference here on the report to November 30th in both the summary and the background information. We approved in September a resolution. My understanding was, the city went out and bought signs, put four of them in there, three of which were stolen. They've now been replaced. And to the best of my knowledge, some enforcement was implemented at that time. It was not. So, no citations have been issued.
Correct.
No tires have been chalked.
No, tires have been chalked, yes, but no citations.
Was that because?
We've placed warnings out there, but we have not written any citations, because we're waiting for the ordinance.
Okay. I'm just, I'm kind of confused of the process, because I thought we took that action back in September, and I'm wondering why it's now back from the standpoint that it's an actual ordinance? Because I asked at the time, we have a two-hour restriction that's on the books, there was some reference that we may have a four-hour, but we don't have apparently anything on three hours. And so, I guess what we're doing tonight is backtracking to put the three-hour period on the books.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm not happy with the way this was handled, because I don't think we were clear from the outset of what we were doing. And I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
Yes, the report on the third paragraph, second page, says on November 30th, the city council adopted a resolution. What's the correction there?
There's, it's a typographical error, it should have been September in the summary, and it should be September on the second page under background on that paragraph instead of November.
Okay.
Any other questions? Members of the public, anybody wishing to speak on this item? So, now we'll go ahead and close public comment, back to us. Is there a motion on this item?
Make a motion for staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. And I guess with the corrections, right? Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Brager, a second by Mayor Protam, Grammy here. Any other discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Order, Mayor? It's roll call vote.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Edgar?
Aye.
Councilmember Groves?
No.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Protam, Mahia?
Aye.
And Mayor Kusamoto.
Aye. Let's pass this for one. Thank you. Okay. Next one would be 12A. I'd like to just go ahead and continue that with the council's concurrence.
Yeah.
Okay. And next would be mayor and council initiated, or council announcements. Anybody wish to go first?
I'll go first.
Thank you, Dean.
As I have in the past, all of the items that I've been involved with since our last meeting are up on the website, and I would like to ask the council to close this meeting this evening in honor of Ben Sutherland. Ben was a member of our planning commission on two different occasions. He's also a retired brigadier general and served as the local representative to the selective service, which we've not been doing any selective service stuff, but he's been involved with the Chamber of Commerce, was a member of the Regional Military Affairs Committee over at the base. His wife passed away earlier this year. They had scheduled a memorial service for his wife at the time that he went into the hospital. The family is still working on the potential of a dual memorial service on behalf of both of them. He is being buried at Arlington, but I would like to adjourn the meeting this evening in his memory.
Thank you. Who wants to go next? Okay.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Troy. No, that's okay. Go ahead, Troy.
I actually read an article in the Register a couple weeks ago that said La Palma and Cypress paid out $1.1 million each in a death of a young girl. The reason for the large judgment was the fact that the cities knew the intersection was dangerous and did nothing about it. It got me to thinking that I'd like to ask two committees to do something, one of which is the Parks and Rec Committee. I'd like them to actually do a review of the parks for both improvement and liability. Just take a look at each park, what can we do better with the park, where are we liable? Same request with the Traffic Commission, looking at any weaknesses for, known weaknesses for the liability issue. While I'm on the commissions, I'd also like to have a discussion of the commissions. First of all, to encourage participation, we have a lot of open seats right now. There's an issue that bothers me, because it affected me personally two years ago, and that was, we had one application for the Park and Rec Commission, but yet it never came forward to us. In my mind, if you're the only applicant, like I was, for the Traffic Commission, you should, if you can pass the interview, you should get the job. The fact that nobody else signed up shouldn't hurt you from getting the position. And eventually, I went through the interview process and got on the Traffic Commission, and I think this same person should be afforded the same treatment. Third, I'd like to have a discussion on two things. One, let's call them chairman term limits. I know in the Traffic Commission, even though I thought Norm did a great job, there were people who did complain that the same person had run the show for three years, and maybe that's something we want to look at. The other, the other question is, if, on the commissions, even though I'm trying to encourage participation, if you miss three meetings in a row, you're off. But if you miss three out of six meetings, you're not off. And all you have to do is show up for every third meeting. And I think maybe we should have a review of that rule and set a number, if you miss so many within a year, maybe you don't have time to do the job. Because, you know, these, to me, the citizen legislator is the greatest thing we have going. You know, these, to me, the citizen legislator is the greatest thing we have going. And for the people who do donate their time, I mean, God bless you, it's just, it's the greatest reach of democracy that we can have. It's at the lowest level, people donating their time, I'm sorry if I'm waving the flag. But, so, a discussion there. I'd also like to see about getting the county to remove the deed restriction on the museum. It's been 75 years, we're not at, they've already given us the property. All we're saying is, if we're going to be paying the expenses, let us enjoy the benefits. You know, we're keeping up that building. If we had done nothing since 1975, it would have fallen down by now. So, it's, I think it should be a fairly simple process. I don't think the county, I doubt they even know they have the deed restriction, quite frankly. But what they're going to do with a little sliver of land in the middle of Los Alamitos really is beyond me in that regard. Finally, a citizen came to me and asked us if we would consider cameras outside, after the recent police chase in the Highlands, cameras on the lights that would, you know, show who came in and out of the Highlands, or any other neighborhood. And I just would ask if the Traffic Commission would be able to consider that, if that might be a good idea. I realize it opens up a lot of First Amendment comments and things like that, and let's just see where people are, if they're interested or not. I ran out of ideas. Thank you.
With that, I'm going to join Rich in the British Parliament. We'll be taking pictures of everybody coming through the city. I have a couple items. I wanted to thank the Chamber for their Chamber Breakfast that they had a couple of weeks ago. They took advantage of the opportunity to introduce our new city manager, and been very proactive. I would encourage everybody that if you could make it to the December 6 Chamber Breakfast, it's our first Friday of the month, and this one has the Los Alamitos High School Choir. It's always probably one of my favorite, because it actually is really fun. The other one, LAEF event. The school district has a LAEF fund that they put on to help finance, it's kind of a charity or nonprofit for the school district. I would want to put in a shameless plug for Meg Katouy, who is the up for nominated for the LAEF Queen. And what you do is, you go online to the L-A-E-F website, and you get to vote for the person you want. And I would just put a challenge out to the community, because I think it's for a really good cause, that if there's any way you can go out there, vote for her, and contribute money to her cause, it's, you basically vote by giving a contribution. I would match the contribution up to my salary for being on the City Council, which isn't a tremendous amount for a month. But I would just encourage anybody to go out there, if you mention on there, and they let me know, I, like I said, I would match it. I'm just really trying to help them raise money for the LAEF fund. They have an event on Thursday, and I'm out of town for that. But I would encourage anybody in the community to be a part of that, and to go out and support that event, and like, or Friday.
It's Friday, yeah.
November 20th, they're going to do the testing of the lights at the fields. That's a very hot issue right now in my neighborhood. So, I know, I've been out walking the community, just to be able to make sure that we get feedback from that, and be constructive in our involvement with the high school and with the residents. And we did get a reaction back from our letter that we had sent out to the school district asking them for some actions. Basically, to recap the response, we said, number one, would you please consider potentially repealing your ordinance to not exclude yourself from the city and state and county laws? And the letter response said, we consider that, but we're going to move ahead forward. And then the second was to go through a voluntary EIR process, and there was really no response to that, it was kind of silent. So, a lot of people have asked me, what was the reaction to that? So, I just wanted to report that out. Casa U Shelter Commander's Ball was on Saturday, and we had a tremendous event. There was about 500 people that showed up for that down in Huntington Beach. And again, one of the big annual fundraisers for that event. And I just want to thank everybody in the community that's been a part of that. And then, Richard, on your park tours item, you know, I was reading through the Parks and Recreation Commission reports, and you know Greg, and maybe Corey, there was an item where the commissioners took tours of the parks. And, you know, one of the things kind of to echo what Rich was saying was, you know, I have a normal running route every morning, I get up and go, and I always go by Stansbury Park, but running on Bald towards the flood control. And it looks like somebody had an off-road race in the middle of that park and did some donuts, and there's a couple cones there. It looks kind of dangerous, and I was just curious, is that the construction from removing the trees? Are we, do we have plans? And did that come up on the park tours that the commissioners went out and looked at? And is there kind of a remediation plan in place?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we had a underground water leak about two weeks ago. And our luck, at the same time Metropolitan Water District truck came out to do their normal maintenance and got stuck. So, we have been doing the repairs. We actually went out there again today, we shut the water off, and everything seems to be okay. I received a phone call from Metropolitan Water District also today, stating that they're going to be doing some main water line repairs in Long Beach in February. And they're consulting with us now to make sure that the park will be okay, because it could be, it could turn into a de-watering station for the main line. So, I'm in contact with them right now to make sure that the park is set for their construction. Won't be having construction activities in our park, but it could be, like I said, a de-watering station. So, we're working on it, and the goal is to get the grass to grow and get it solid again.
Can I ask a question? You know, we were very receptive to the Metropolitan Water District asking for their easements to remove some pretty big trees. The park was never really brought back up to standards, and then, you know, and again, the Metropolitan truck doing the thing in the middle of, and a water leak, AKA through the Metropolitan. Any possibility of talking to them about replacing our grass and really bringing that park back? And I'm not saying file a claim, but, you know, we, some of us know members on the Metropolitan Water Board, and we could lobby that too, just like we did for the county for the flood control. But that park, it really got torn up bad. I mean, it looks terrible.
In the lease, it does say that we are liable and responsible for all the maintenance of the park itself, and any repairs that need to be done. About 30 days ago, Stephen and I, we met out there to look at the different new boundaries of what we're going to be maintaining. It is in the schedule for next month for Public Works to go out and basically do a major cleanup on the banks of the bridge heading up there, and also on the Riverside Bank. Once that's completed and irrigation is repaired, we are then going to be planting some new trees up on top of the, next to the sidewalk, so bringing that park back up to what it was. So, we're kind of ahead of the curve, but next month is the month that we're going to be doing that.
Last question. So, I understand the, because we did look at the lease, so we know that what our requirements and responsibilities are. But, you know, water leak and a truck driving across the middle, I mean, do you think we might have crossed the threshold of potentially going back and asking them to fix what they damaged?
It can't hurt to ask.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Real quick. I want to add on to what Richard said. Several council meetings back, I talked about potentially seeing if we could have cameras, and I don't know if they already exist at the entrance to the 605, and then the exit from the 605, because I know that some of the other cities had done that because of crimes that had happened in their community and people getting on the freeway. So, I'd like to kind of jump on to that. Stephen, for, and I don't know if you have this answer, do we have cameras throughout the community? And if so, on the major arterials into and out of town, do we have them there already?
Chief, can I get a little help with that answer?
Is it a secret?
No.
Persons of interest.
No. There might be cameras for traffic engineering purposes, but we don't have any cameras out there that...
Right.
That, you know...
You monitor.
That we monitor or get the information from.
If there was a crime committed, could you get access to that information or those pictures?
No.
No?
No. Potentially at our red light intersections, potentially, but...
Even, okay.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to see if we can expand what Richard was asking, if we're going to do a study to have, for purposes for our Police Department, to track people who are coming in and going out of the city that may be potentially causing crimes. If we could look into what that would cost us, if we could tag on to what Richard's doing, that would be great. I wanted to remind people who are opposed to the toll lanes, that the OCTA Board meeting is going to be on December 9th, and that's where we're going to be making the final decision as to whether or not those stay just high occupancy lanes, or if they become hot lanes, which are toll lanes. So, if you're interested in attending that meeting, Greg, could we, is it appropriate to have that on the city website? I don't have the address and that. Okay, so you can go to our city website and get that information. I would encourage you to come, because I think the strong show force at the initial meeting we did kind of made the board step back just a little bit. And if we can have a strong show there, it may be the decision-making factor that encourages them not to put toll lanes on our freeway. And again, Rich, I'm going to jump on to yours. I agree with the limit for the chair, but I also think that we might want to look at term limits for commissioners. I don't know what the amount of time would be, that could be discussed by the council. But I think that that way it opens the door for new people to serve. Many times, we've had new people come, apply for our commissions. We have several commissioners who have been there for many years, which we love, they do great work. But new people are not getting the opportunity to serve, and so people, I think, in that are not coming forward to apply for those positions. So, that's all.
Thank you. Okay.
December 9th.
Oh, thank you Dean.
The 13th.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so, I attended the toll lane, I-405 toll lane discussions, and I actually went to the OCTA Board. And I do want to recognize that Stephen Mendoza was there as well on his day off, and I want to, you know, note that and appreciate his attendance there. And what we did based on that, is I sent a letter off to the OCTA Board, because one of the outcomes of that meeting was that they wanted more time to get public input. So, I invited them to our city in a workshop-type fashion, we would notice it out to the public, and we invite them here, and they can hear from us as to what our thoughts are on the toll lane. And I guess the new date is January, but the, at that time, the date was the 9th of December. So, I want to, again, press the test. I want to make sure they're going to come out here and listen to us. So, we're trying to keep up the pressure. I talked with Director Matt Harper, who's also Mayor Protem of the City of Seal Beach, but he's also on the OCTA Board. And I did ask him about coming out to our city to talk with us about the toll lane. But he's already, I think, pretty much stated he's in favor of the alternative to and not the toll lane. But I think there's some other opportunities there to still engage with the OCTA Board. I met with members of the community, Grant and Judy Parker, I happened to run into them, and they were asking about trees in the Greenbrook area. So, I'm over there on Myra. So, there was some, I guess some, I guess curb sides or parkways that are somewhat barren, they're asking if there's something we can do about that. So, I want to just bring it to the attention of the council and staff, and I'm not sure what we can do.
Yeah, just to add to that, I mean, we've got some sort of a tree disease problem going. We've got trees that are just falling apart out there. And I know Tony, you've been getting a tremendous amount of calls.
Okay.
Previous City Councilmember, Mr. Wahlhold, not Wahlholz. Oh my God, I'm slipping. But, yeah, my neighbor, yeah, he just, he constantly is telling me that all of the neighbors there on the street are coming to his house as a conduit to let them know that we're having troubles with their trees on Myra.
Okay, thank you for that. So, if there's something we can do there. I did attend the museum's honored citizens recognition and recognized both David Appeling and John Underwood, so I wanted to note that. Mr. Underwood's here, thank you. And it was, it was interesting, John was actually speechless for a few moments there, and didn't really see that much. So, anyways, John was recognized for his achievements. The last couple of weeks, I had the opportunity to attend the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. I was there, after I had met with the Sturtons, I stayed over for that meeting and got to hear a little bit of that. And the one thing that kind of spoke to me about what was going on there was the sequestration cuts and how it was affecting the senior meals. And there's a lot of, I guess, hard work by the staff, by Greg and Corey's staff, so appreciate that. And I wanted to know, to note, and there was a resource that, it's a kind of an interesting story. My parents were up here having lunch with us, and they had met somebody they know that lives in Rossmore, that worked in Almonte, where I grew up, where my parents still live. And Greg knows her, is, and she's on the Commission of Aging or something like that, at the Governor Brown's level. So, there's a resource we have in our community here that can possibly, you know, we can use. So, I pass that information on to Emmeline and Corey, so we have resources, so let's go press those. And let's see, I also attended the Planning Commission, and I was just there to thank the commissioners. And I did listen to the part about the request for a guest home over on Marne, over in the Elrata Parks Estate, the parts that's on our, in our city limits. And I also attended the Traffic Commission meeting, and I did bring something forward that I brought before, was a, some key clear zones over there by the high school. So, I don't know if the commission's going to react to it, but I did make a second attempt, and I just wanted to note that. Seal Beach, I attended their State of the City luncheon last week, and it went really, really well, and a lot of people there, and it was enjoyable. One of the things that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to backtrack a little bit on the Planning Commission. Afterwards, I had a very interesting discussion with the Commissioner and the Plan Director about being business-friendly. So, I'm going to try and formulate some kind of a request of, to look at staff, to look at this. And it depends on, I guess, the way that the permitting process works, that if a contractor from, let's say, Rossmore or Seal Beach comes into my home and they do some work, they would have to pull both a, the permit for me on my behalf, as well as a business license. And I'm looking, what I wonder is, how much business license revenues do we get? And do we really need that? Because if they're licensed to conduct their business at their home, let's say Seal Beach, why would we want to have another business license on that? Because it gets passed on to me as the owner, homeowner, that's doing the work, however directly or indirectly. So, I want to see what we can do on that one for, you know, waiving that or reciprocal agreement. So, we'll work that with the next city manager, and we'll have to see what kind of numbers might be at risk. But I want to see what we can do to be more business-friendly. And then, we just had the proclamation for small business, and small businesses aren't always brick and mortar. They could be the plumber, or the electrician, and the truck that comes to your house, and those work, and let's just make it easier for them and less costly for the consumers. And then finally, I guess, on a couple of points here on the Councilmember Murphy's risk, I put it risk mitigation and the walking, that I would like to see if we can bring it back here for discussion, so we can provide some guidance to the commissions. And I would like to see us engage the Joint Powers Insurance Agency. They have risk management people there that can help us and really guide us to that process. So, we're not going off and, you know, seeing things that are probably not really risk and just something of concern, but not really that rises to the level of risk. So, I think we want to be very, very careful about that. And then as far as the thought about cameras, I guess, kind of the same thing, back to us to see, I would look to the chief. You don't probably have the infrastructure nor the staff to be able to monitor cameras, and so that'd be a concern, that if there's some way to implement the technology, but then we'd, I think, have to have that, the laborer to go along with it. And then, you know, maybe there's the, what do you call the funding that, for the recovery, like the...
Forfeiture.
Forfeiture, yeah, that, maybe that might be a funding source, but then it still doesn't answer the labor question. So, I think that's something we would need to look amongst ourselves. So, with that, I think we're going to, oh, that's it for me on comments, and then items from the city manager.
Just tomorrow is my last day, and once again, want to thank you Mayor and City Council for the opportunity to work with you and the fine staff, and for extending my, amending my agreement this evening. So, I'll look forward to continuing the association.
Thank you. City Attorney, do you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
There are a few closed sessions, actually four of them on the agenda. What is that, agenda page? One of them is significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision B of Section 5495 6.91, potential case. And there are two significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision C of Section 5495 6.92, potential cases. It would prejudice the interests of the city to disclose the facts and the names of the potential litigants. And also, the city... And also, the city manager negotiator is requesting a conference regarding unrepresented employees, executive management, middle management.
I think we'll continue that because the
You could, or you could just discuss it tonight, and then perhaps it'll be ready for adoption, adoption next time.
It's already 10:30, so I would be supportive of that.
We can decide to close with that one. Okay. Okay, thank you. And so we'll come back out here after a closed session, and we will adjourn in honor of former, well, formerly retired Brigadier General Ben Sutherland.